I'd like to call the Board of Education for Wednesday, November 13th, 2013 to order. Can we have a roll call, please, Mrs. Schleeter?
Sure. Mr. Alexandrovich?
Here.
Mrs. Evans?
Here.
Mrs. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Nielsen?
Here.
Mrs. Witkowski?
Here.
I am here. And Mrs. Larson will be the lead?
Thank you. Has the meeting been properly posted, Dr. Pats?
It has.
Thank you. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item three is community comment. Per board policy, we allow up to 15 minutes of resident comment. Would anyone like to make a comment? Hi. Please come to the microphone and state your name and address.
Good evening. I'm Sherry Hanneman. I am a parent, 3926 Maple Crest Drive in Franklin. I'm a parent of a freshman daughter at the high school and a seventh grade son at the middle school, and I'm here to speak to item nine on this evening's agenda. As I review the instructional services report for new course proposals, I'm shocked to read the proposal that economics would no longer be a required course, but rather be replaced by a course in comparative governments. I am personally a master's level economist and next semester plan to be even teaching as an adjunct instructor at Marquette University. And I am here to urge you, even respectfully demand, that you continue to require our students to have a course in economics. The director of Wisconsin Center for Economic Education at Lakeland College, Dr. Scott Miederjohn, is quoted as saying, "The nation's ongoing financial problems are a painful illustration of the real-world ramifications that an economically and financially illiterate public can bring." He cites a study by the Council for Economic Education that found only 26% of Wisconsin high schools require the study of economics, and that Wisconsin high school students didn't know basic economic concepts such as gross domestic product, inflation, or even supply and demand. If Franklin schools want our students to be set apart as superior in the state, dropping a required economics curriculum will not help. The Federal Reserve Bank of Minneapolis weighs in by saying that the development of basic economic literacy is important for a democratic society that relies heavily on informed, personal economic decision-making. When our students graduate high school, they earn the label of a decision-maker. Without basic economic literacy skills, how can we expect them to make informed decisions in the marketplace, in their personal lives, and in the voting booth? Research from the Council for Economic Education shows that students from the 22 states in the nation where a high school economics course is required were more likely to display positive financial behaviors. Compared to other students, these young adults are more likely to save, less likely to max out their credit cards, less likely to make late credit card payments, they are more likely to pay off credit cards in full each month, and less likely to be compulsive buyers. In a nation where college graduates owe more than $25,000 in student loan debt and less than 50 of the adult, 50% of the adult population can define what a budget deficit is, we need to be certain that students graduating from Franklin High School have the literacy necessary to make critical analysis of today's important economic policy issues and how those issues affect their own lives and decision-making process. As a parent and a taxpayer and as an economist, I cannot stress enough the importance of maintaining the economics course requirements at Franklin High School. We would be doing our students a terrible disservice by sending them into the world without a base competency in economic behavior.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Are there any other comments? Thank you. And Mrs. Larson has joined us. Thank you. Item four on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Witkowski. Is there a second?
Well, second.
Second by Mr. Alexandrovich. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the agenda say aye.
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 Opposed.
Extension. Motion carries. Item five is consent agenda. Is there any board member that would like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion to approve items 5A through 5D on the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, is that Mrs. Klein?
Yes, it was.
Second by Mrs. Klein. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Extension. Motion carries. Item six is school board announcements. Does anyone have an announcement?
I went to the football game last Friday. It was a phenomenal game. And the next game is this Friday at 7:00 at Kettle Marine High School against McQuanigo. And I also went to the Cinnamon Inside Aircraft Fair on Saturday, and it was really nicely attended. Nice job.
Thank you.
I also attended the craft fair, and it was really appreciative of the extra effort by staff to facilitate the parking and the inflow and outflow of the situation. It's much appreciated. And I also did attend the foundation fundraiser once and I did. It was fun.
Mm-hmm.
Not sure, it was a spirited bidding for the, was it silent auction? And...
For the voice auction.
For the voice auction.
Yeah.
So, and I hope they raise a ton of money, so...
I was also at the Cinnamon Inside Aircraft Fair, and I heard a follow-up from UMPs that, which is the United Music Parents Group, that they did raise over $6,000 for music scholarships and the music program at the high school. So, they did very well in spite of the change of venue this year.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you. Item seven is the school board calendar. We have a special board meeting on Wednesday, December 4th, here at the ECC at 6 o'clock PM. A regular board meeting Wednesday, December 11th, here at the ECC at 6 o'clock PM. Item eight is the liaison reports, personnel and policy. Mrs. Larson?
Yes, I am going to defer that to Dr. Zalmer.
Thank you.
Thank you. As it says in board docs, there are three policies that are related to curriculum and philosophy of education, and they were, they had some overlap, and they had a lot of detail that was unnecessary at the policy level. And so, we went through a process of reviewing these, and Wendy and I looked at them and drafted them. And then, we met with Melissa, who didn't, you know, we were right at the end of a meeting. We didn't have lots of time to go into great detail, but we talked about the, you know, a tip that she gave us, which was to put these statements on the front end of the, of the policy part of the agenda, so you could see what the overall intention of the policies of this revision is. And the, if we look at 6,000 and 6010 and 6,200, there's, the curriculum and standards implementation had some pieces in it that we salvaged and put them into the new policy. And, and then there, in the philosophy of education pieces, there were sections there that were more, they weren't philosophical, they were more about curriculum development. And so, we put those into the curriculum development and implementation and evaluation policy. And then, in the philosophy of education part of policy, it was, it was written as a policy, as a, more of a policy that reflects a philosophy as opposed to curriculum implementation. And so, the philosophy statement, if we look at that, it is, it really reflects what our practice is here in the district. I think it will serve us well into the future because it focuses on a combination of a set curriculum and student interests, and that's what we're working toward in terms of student engagement and personalized learning. And all of the other main components from the other policies are captured in the, the new policy called Curriculum Development Implementation and Evaluation. And we took the components from the other pieces and put them in a logical order of the role of curriculum, the parties responsible for curriculum development as designated by the board, assessment development, which is a part of that process, the main components of curriculum at a broader level than existed in, at a clearer level than existed in the previous policies, and implementation of the curriculum through instruction, and continuous curriculum review process, which we're continuously revising, and then course additions and deletions subject to board approval like we're doing tonight. And so, it was just a condensing of what was already there in a cleaner and clearer way and identifying philosophy, true philosophy statement.
Thank you.
The old philosophy of education had a lot of detail in it. Where has that gone?
The, the main parts of...
Somewhere else, because in what is, we have right now is so short, and there's just no detail to it.
Right. And I think that it's, it's appropriate at the policy level to not have those details.
Then the details are where then? I mean, that's, that's what I meant, like, if they're not in any of these policy statements, where are the details then?
What I'm saying is that, at the policy level, these details are, they shouldn't have been there in the first place. They were, they were written in policy at some other time where we just need the broad steps at, at the policy level, and the broad steps are picked up from that previous policy in the current policy. Every piece is there, it's just not down to those minute levels of details in curriculum because those pieces change all the time. So, our policy is more geared to process and the way that, that we develop in, you know, because curriculum is changing all the time. And so, where are the details? They're captured in broader statements in the new policy.
And the details are captured in the individual curriculums. Does that answer your question, Alan? Or that's how I understand it?
Yeah. It, this isn't, it's, the policy isn't meant to be a curriculum statement, and that's what the previous policy was.
There was one element, though, that I think is missing. In the old one, item number A2, which talks about instructional program designed to give pupils experience in vocational skills, so is there some thought in developing a curriculum that's going to have somewhat of a work focus? I don't believe that's anywhere in the, the new one.
Newer language is careers, and careers is reflected in the new policy.
Where would, it's broad-based, student-centered, forward-thinking?
Yeah. If it, if it's not, we could fix that, but it should be in there.
It's in the Curriculum Development Implementation and Evaluation Policy, but it's not in the philosophy, at least not.
Right. That, that's where it would belong. It's not a philosophy statement, so it's moved to the other policy.
Right. Vocational is...
Third paragraph, Linda.
Yeah. We're not using the word vocational so much anymore, and so, it was just updated to what is being used, which has to do with careers. Yeah, and I concur with what Melissa says, that the details are in each individual curriculum as they're developed through our regular processes.
One of the statements here is, on the old one, is "The knowledge of morality and the individual's responsibility as a social being." Is that picked up in how many curriculums?
I think it's picked up in, in the way the schools are run, which is picked up in a broad way in the philosophy statement, where, let me see, where's that philosophy statement? Oh, here it is. Where it says, "The school represents a larger society, therefore, the social atmosphere of the school should be cooperative, inclusive, fostering an open and critical-minded approach to life." And based on the idea that an education promotes the attributes of personal responsibility, citizenship, creative, creative and critical thinking, and the ability to solve problems, it's in there.
It's well-hidden, yes.
Pardon me?
It's well-hidden. I think statements, statements about morality need to be...
You want to see, you want to see the word morality in there?
I, I don't know that we're teaching morals in school.
I don't think it's our job to teach morals in school.
It's not.
I think it's the family's job.
We're, we're, we're teaching and educating students about life, and morality is definitely a part of life.
And I think that our philosophy statement covers that, especially in the last statement that Dr. Zalmer had just read to us. And I also think that, as I've sat here on this board, it comes to my mind that the more we look at these policies or we write curriculum and things, we seem to write things that are more broad, so they're more encompassing, and so, we don't lock ourselves into that little tiny box. Like, when we redid one of our policies, I, I don't know if I'm remembering this correctly, but for our new, new board member handbook, we didn't want to lock ourselves into one small item or something like that. I think if we leave things more broad, then we can cover more things, and I think that's what this statement does.
I think it's important to address, we looked at Dr. Miller's shares comparable districts policy with us, and we don't renegade from the norm of what's occurring in districts that we compare ourselves to. And our poly, the existing policy referring to was completely unlike all the other policies. The one you're seeing now would put us more in line with all of the districts that we chose to look at their policies. So, we didn't do something unusual, we did what the norm was doing this round.
The terminology that I may be getting at what you're thinking about, Alan, has to do with respect and responsibility, and it's mentioned in both the philosophy statement and the curriculum development language multiple times.
Okay. Thank you.
Are we dealing with just the philosophy policy right now before we move on?
Yeah, let's do it separately.
Why don't we just do that first? Do I hear a motion to approve Board Policy 6,000 as revised?
I would make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Larson. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mrs. Klein. Is there any discussion?
Well, I guess I'm still not sure how we came up with this one, though. Did you just pick key statements from the prior one? Or was it really...
You're referring to this and this, which policies are this?
Philosophy, this one and the old one? Did you just select key statements, and that's how you came up with this?
I mean, to get the philosophy?
Correct.
The, a philosophy of education isn't something that you create. It's something that you select. And there are multiple philosophies of education out there on a spectrum from one end to the other, and this one is pretty much in the middle. Let me give you an example. On the, on one end of the spectrum is a pretty hands-off type of approach. It's based on a belief that people learn on their own, and it, it's like the original kindergarten. When it first started, it was, just had, just had an environment, and you put the kids in it, and you just let them be there all by itself, by themselves, and they'll just figure things out. And on the other end of the spectrum, there's, based on a learning theory that is very direct, very behavioristic, and you believe that students only and people in general only learn with stimulus and response. And somewhere in between, there, there are multiple other types of theories of learning and philosophies of education. One of them is that, another one is that the student or the person is receptive to be filled up, and that's not what this says. This says that the learner is a human being, the learner has interests that are important in the learning process, not mechanical on one end, and not to be left all alone on the other end, but to be at a balance of a set curriculum and students' interests and, because they're going to learn better if we can find ways to get inside their space and engage them in that, that set curriculum. And so, most of our schools, if you were to hide any of the titles on these things and, and just put this in front of them, this is what's more description of what's happening in modern schools than either, either of the other ends of the spectrum or anything else in between. And so, we tried to capture that by selecting this.
So, the existing policy wasn't really reflective of what we felt that policy should represent, but we did honor that existing policy by moving in to the other policy, what we felt was appropriate. But we wanted Franklin to have an appropriate philosophy and not a list of details that really wasn't a philosophy of education.
So, this, this statement, to ask your, answer your question, Linda, this statement came out of books that have to do with, it's, it's a, it's a paraphrasing of this philosophy of education out of multiple books, and all these philosophies have been tested over time, and then have been developed over time, and then, as a basis, educational institutions will choose one of them and then base all of their, the rest of their work on that. And we thought that this one reflected what the rest of our work is like.
It just misses for me this career readiness element anywhere in here, and maybe you can just add second last sentence, "This philosophy is based on the idea that an education promotes the attributes of personal responsibility, citizenship, creative and critical thinking, and the ability to solve problems and, and participate in our economic society." I don't know, something related to the fact that a...
It's, it's picked up in the, in the Curriculum Development Implementation and Evaluation Policy. The district curriculum is designed to emphasize the development of skills and knowledge in the academic, in the areas of academics, career awareness, citizenship, and so on. It's, it's more of a curriculum focus as opposed to a philosophical focus.
So, I'm, just in my opinion, I think we should add something to reflect the fact that, you know, we, we, that's what we're hearing a lot about, that we're moving toward a, you know, career-ready.
Right.
And shouldn't that be somewhere? It's in the curriculum, the other policy. In the curriculum development, but it's not in the philosophy. I'm just asking, can you... The philosophy is general and not specific. We have to move somewhere else to get more details, and that's why it's in the other policy. A philosophy is written by somebody like John Dewey. It's not written by Mike Zalmer and Wendy DeZurich. So, we're trying to honor the spirit of the great educators that determine philosophies and select one that's appropriate for Franklin, and we, you will see, everything we talk about tonight is about career readiness. We don't dispute that, and it's in the other policy. We can add it, but it's not going, it'll be counterintuitive to a, a, a formal educational philosophy.
And I think that, you know, the relationship to being a citizen is related to that career readiness that's a part of the curriculum. If you do that piece, you know, you've contributed to what our philosophy is, is to prepare young people to be citizens.
And this isn't a vision or a mission, it's a philosophy, and that's something different. And it's your purview, we can add it, but we're trying to honor a philosophy.
I think the former policy was more of an administrative rule...
Exactly.
...than, than any philosophy at all.
Right. I agree. And yet, you know, and yet, we wanted to capture the pieces that someone thought were important at some point and brought them into the other curriculum development policy.
Well, I guess I hear, I hear you saying that this was a, a package, and we should keep the package together. Okay. I guess I thought we might, as a, you know, local board, we might be able to put our spin on it, but you prefer to pick it off the shelf and adopt it as is. And that's fine, if that's, if the board agrees, I'm, I'm okay with that.
I don't think that anyone just picked it off a shelf and plopped it in our lap. I think that there was a lot of thought and work behind making this policy workable and something that Franklin, we can be proud of. And I, I, I take offense to you saying something like that to the people that work so hard...
It wasn't intended to offend anybody.
To make a good product here.
It wasn't intended to offend anybody, Debbie, it was just, you know, I just think that as a board, we, this is our philosophy, and I just asked for tweaking. I understand now that you wanted, this is a big thinker, somebody else put this together, and if the board's, you know, I can go along with that. We're all good with that, it's fine.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion by Mrs. Larson and a second by Mrs. Klein to approve Board Policy 6,000 as revised. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Extension? Motion carries. Next, we'll move on to Board Policy 6,200, Curriculum Development Implementation and Evaluation, which is revised. We'll start with a motion. Is, is there a motion to approve Board Policy 6,200 as revised?
I would make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Larson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nielsen. Any discussion? I've got some discussion regarding the second paragraph, the last line, where it says, "Assessment of student learning shall be developed according to best practices for assessment quality, allowing staff to understand what students have, have or have not learned." And I, I'm curious about the assessments. Are they only for the staff to understand what students have or have not learned, or should we also have, also for students to understand what they have or have not learned?
Sure.
And parents as well, maybe?
Pardon me?
And parents as well, maybe?
Yeah. What do you think, you know, staff, parents, community, or something like that?
It's in the learning community.
Or stakeholders. It could be not parents, it could be guardians, it could be who's ever a stakeholder in that child's education.
I think stakeholder is a good term.
Is that a, agreed stakeholder?
And the only other point I had was that, except for at the very beginning where it says, "The Franklin School District affirms that an effective and evolving curriculum is necessary for students' achievement of academic excellence," nowhere in here does it mention anything else based on achievement. And, and as we, we say all the time, that's what we're here for, is achievement. And I'm not quite sure where we would add that at this point. I mean, I think that would, if we decided to add something on achievement, I think we would need a recommendation where, but...
Third paragraph, maybe, first sentence. It says, "The district curriculum is designed to emphasize the development of skills and knowledge," maybe in there someplace.
And you could say academic growth, add growth in there, because that's what we're looking for, is all students to grow.
Development of, where is it?
It talks about maximizing learning. But one way to do it would be to take that first sentence where it says, "It's the responsibility of all teachers and administrators to implement the Franklin Public Schools curriculum and instructional practices that are relevant to their teaching or administrative roles and result in increased student achievement," if you want that there.
I would, I would prefer growth, just because that's the...
Result in increased student growth.
Yeah. Yeah. Continuous student growth or something like that. So, you're assuring that wherever they're at, they're moving forward.
We have that result in there. Mrs. Schleter suggesting academic growth.
Oh, academic growth, sure.
Academic growth.
Result in academic growth.
I think academic kind of narrows the scope somewhat, though. I mean, we want growth in all areas, not just academics, because in the third paragraph we list academics, career awareness, citizenship, technology, personal development, health, and safety. I think we want growth in all those areas, not just the academic area.
It does refer to development, maybe emphasize, instead of emphasize the development of skills, maybe the growth of skills and knowledge and then it that would apply to that whole list.
If you say result in student achievement, you've covered, you know, achievement, it's all those areas.
So, I'm going to be back to that first sentence in the fourth paragraph and then have just add on the end of it, that result in student growth.
Or student achievement.
Or student achievement.
Student achievement, in whatever they're doing, they're achieving, whatever area.
Growing.
Growth and achievement, you've used both words.
Is is that okay? Would that be a good place to put that, you think?
I'm okay with that, I don't know about...
Then we're picking, and it's a reemphasis, which is something you were showing an interest in, it's a reemphasis in student achievement, in addition to what it says in the first sentence. Is that okay?
Is that acceptable to the board?
Can you read, can you read it?
Sure. The fourth paragraph, first sentence, "It's the responsibility of all teachers and administrators to implement the Franklin Public Schools curriculum and instructional practices that are relevant to their teaching or administrative roles that result in student achievement."
Over time.
Or would the next sentence where, at the end of the next sentence, it talks about engaging students in their education and maximizing learning, is that where you want to maybe insert, um, resulting in student achievement? I don't know. Maybe it fits better there, I don't know. It seems to me that where you're putting it doesn't really connect what it is that's resulting in that, whereas curriculum design instruction really relates more to...
Okay, so, for the purposes of where you're picking up, Linda, for...
Correct.
For the purposes of engaging students in their education...
And resulting in and resulting in student achievement.
I don't know, are we starting to read it?
Just add it in there?
I think it was an either or, not an addition to. I think that's what she was talking about.
Okay. Right.
Instead of...
Correct, instead of the other airport here.
Okay, so then that sentence, we'll read fourth paragraph, it's the second sentence. Curriculum and instructional design are to intentionally respond to personalized learning needs, diversity of students' backgrounds, and other individual considerations for the purposes of engaging students in their education and maximizing learning and that result in...
I would take out maximizing learning and just say, and resulting in student achievement.
I see. Okay, so it's engaging students in their education and resulting in student achievement. Yeah, I think you're right, it's probably a better spot.
Does that sound good to everyone?
I'm sure.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on Policy 6200? Hearing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Larson, second by Mr. Nielsen to approve Board Policy 6200 as revised, and then with the added with the added changes just made, is that acceptable? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension. Motion carries. And then we move on to the elimination of Policy 6010. Do I hear a motion?
I would make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Larson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Klein, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of eliminating Policy 6010, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, and we move on to Reports and Presentations, 9A Superintendent's Report, Summit Update.
As you're aware, I attended a summit, an invitation-only summit, in San Antonio, Texas last week, and I think it was probably one of the most in-depth professional development opportunities that I've been involved in. What was, I think, extremely beneficial for this, these were the schools around the country that are really the top of the top. When you sat there in this room and listened to them, you were just really taken back by all the things they're doing, but you also quickly realized that there's a great deal of simplicity that goes into really running quality schools. And there were a number of speakers from IBM, from Dell, from Google, and so on, so forth, and people that really have a an eye on what these the technology in particular mean to education. And I think every speaker that was up there highlighted the importance of collaboration and trust if you're going to get results and how how that's valuable within any organization. And he really, they really even took it down to the school level of staff trusting their own staff, for example, grade-level teachers with grade-level teachers and so on. And what they all also emphasized that we need to stop trying to do everything. And then the one speaker who was extremely dynamic said, "You need to stop trying to do everything and don't tell me you're not." And, you know, there's really something that to be said about that statement, and we talk about it a lot, that we try to do so many things and we would rather get really good at a few instead of average at a lot of things. But one of the most important things, I think, is that I got out of the conference was there was a gentleman from the Mind Research Institute, and the first time I saw him, he was about 6'8" and he had real long blond hair, he looked like a big Swede walking out of the, you know, and everybody sort of wondered what the connection was to him of him to the conference. And his name was Nigel. And but within 10 seconds after opening his mouth, you figured he was a genius real quick. This guy was really, really sharp and he was able to talk about kids. And his primary function worldwide for this institute associated with Google, Dell, and a couple others, was to create games. Now, that may sound a little trivial, but if you saw this thing in action, now he had an audience of, there was probably 125 of us or so, we'd like to believe are educated people sitting there, and he put a math game out there for kindergarten through third graders, and we were all stumped. We didn't know what the heck we were doing. And as you look at it, and one of the keys they talked about, there was the four pivotal points of education, and they are experience, connect, practice, and apply. And he said, "Educators across the country, what we focus on too much is practice and apply, and we don't focus enough on experience and connect." And one of the speakers that followed this particular individual got up there and said, "The best part of learning is for the teacher to not speak." And if you think about that, and if you think about some of the the ways you put kids in a situation where they're forced to learn on their own, a little bit of what Mike said earlier, it's not to contradict, he said, "But the first kindergartens where you just sort of threw them in a room and they learn." Well, these kids do have some sort of a background, some concepts, and those kinds of things. But it really made you stop and think about the way we teach kids and the way kids learn and and how important it is that we we assess not what they do, but what they understand. And that was, I think, a real pivotal point to make that everybody seemed to take away with them when we were in roundtable sessions. That particular point was was talked about quite a bit, that over the years, we we've looked at assessment of, okay, they did something and we assess it, but that's not, that's wrong. You know, we should be assessing what they what they know and they understand and they comprehend and what they can do. And and I think in our district, to our credit, I think we've made a lot of progress in that way, just in terms of performance-based learning and those kinds of things. I think they they all said, I think in unanimity, that we need to get out of the way of kids and let them learn. You know, we talk about teachers being the sage on the stage and, you know, you guys are all excellent at what you do. And I know for art, for example, look at Jean, and I go by her art class, and Stacy's too, in a high school, and you see kids doing all the time. You don't see people, you know, instructing and talking and just filling them up. I think Mike said it earlier as well, but, you know, kids aren't there to be a receptacle. They're there to be able to learn and adapt and comprehend and those kinds of things. So, it was a conference that I think if if every, you know, particularly the administrator with teachers as well, and then even parent and whomever, were able to see what what's going on throughout the country and how valuable it is. And then they talked a great deal about technology and how technology isn't for everyone. And, you know, there's there's a point to be made there in some respects, and there are some people like myself that disagreed to some degree with that that particular statement, because it's it's become a way of life in our society that we use it. It's in everything we do. But the one thing I did take away from it, we've talked a lot, and a lot of districts have talked about one-on-one-to-one, you know, a device per every student. And he said, "If you really value collaboration and if you really want your kids to interact and your staff, you shouldn't be one-to-one, you should be three-to-one or two-to-one." Because one-to-one means Mrs. Evans has her device, I have my device, and we're sitting there working in a in a silo. But if I only have one and she and I have to work together, now we're collaborating, we're talking, we're can, you know, we're coming up with better ideas and so on. And they even talked about how the universities have really taken that into their cohort programs in just about every field about, you don't have to go through this by yourself and there's two voices are better than one type of mentality. So, it was an outstanding conference and plus they paid for everything, so that was the best part of it. But it really was one of those that it forced me to take a look back at what we're doing here, and I think all of us that have gone to conferences, you sit back and you say, you know, how do we compare it to all to what everybody else is doing? And I'm pretty proud to say we're doing a lot of really good things, but I'm also, you know, going to step forward and say, there's some things that we can do better, too. But I think we're getting there and and I think that's always been one of our our motives is to try to make sure that we improve each and every year. So, it was it was just a fantastic experience. They they had, the way it was was formulated the very first night, these particular vendors, Google and Dell and all those people, they were hosts in a room for a dinner, but they weren't allowed to talk. They were, they just, they were just there to be sort of a host or a hostess, whatever you will. And the point was, is that they were forcing us to collaborate with each other. And these people are from all over the country, you know, you don't know who they are at first, and and because that then developed a relationship when you got into roundtable discussions, then pretty soon you knew people. And, you know, you meet people from all over and it really was a valuable experience to see what schools are doing. Several people had indicated, we and then we all had to get up there and give sort of a five-minute overview of our districts and so on, and we talked about some of the things that we do here in Franklin, and a number of people are thinking about coming and visiting our schools, talking about some of the things that we do. And, you know, there are certainly schools out there that we have visited and will continue to visit as well. So, overall, it was a great experience. I think anytime you have an opportunity for qualities, professional development, development, which this was, I think it's fortunate to be able to take advantage of it. So, I thank the board for letting me go and it was a good experience.
Were there any other districts from our area?
There was one other one, Northland Pines, from Eagle River. Didn't even know he was there and I was registering, and all of a sudden they look over and there he was standing there, and he was a good friend of mine, I never even knew he was going, so, but so that was the only one. Otherwise, they were from just everywhere and anywhere. So, that's all.
Thank you. Item 9B is the Instructional Services Report. First, we have the new course approvals. Dr. DeZurich?
Thank you. I talked with Mrs. Evans before and we're going to go through each area separately and approve them individually, each content area. I'm going to start off by turning it over to Melissa to see if she has any comments and then I will take it from there. I appreciate Melissa met with Mike and I, and she helps us see our reports through the eyes of non-instructional services people or teachers, and so we were able to make some changes, and I just wanted to offer her an opportunity to say anything before I started.
Well, I met with Mike and Wendy, I guess it was just last week, wasn't it? And I had a lot of questions for them and hopefully, I think a lot of them are reflected in the in the document that that you see in front of you. It's pretty exciting, the Inroads Project. You'll see that we have some specifics, because we need to do them for the course catalog, but we don't have, you know, it's still a work in progress. So, we don't have all of the details yet, but those are coming within the next few months, so, but we need to get these courses in the catalog so that we can start with our incoming ninth graders next year. There are several new social studies courses and several new art courses that are very exciting also. So, with that, I'll turn it back to you.
I'd like to start by introducing my guests. As you know, this work is done in collaboration with the educators that have to deliver the courses. So, we have, from art, we have Jean Moore, who's the coordinator, and on both sides of her are Paula, Pa- Paula, and Stacy Mercier, I'm mixing them up. And they are our high school teachers who were instrumental in the new design we'll talk about shortly. And we have Susan Berry here for social studies, she's the high school coordinator, overseer of the department. And we have Terry Testman here for Inroads, and I know she was here with you a few weeks ago. And Mike Nowak's here as their support. So, those are the guests I have with me this evening. And just a reminder, I know everybody but Alan's heard this, you know this is the cart before the horse syndrome. All of the areas that are coming before you tonight are in a formal curriculum review, which is a very extensive process. And I know Linda's request was, please give us the review results before you give us these courses. And we try mightily to do that, but unfortunately, we need to use the PD hours that we have built into the calendar, and there's only so many of them. And we like to honor that we should be fiscally responsible, so we don't spend dollars and dollars bringing the teachers in in the summer. So, it's impossible to sit them down for two weeks or three weeks and do this work, so we have to do it over time and the time we can afford to compensate for and the time that we're given. So, that's why you see it piecemeal. But each area will, you will receive an executive summary and a small report to the school board as we finish the work and Dr. Patz. And Mrs. Evans fit it into the workflow of your calendar for the school year, so those will be coming in all areas. Just a quick overview, the course selection is based on review decisions, best practices, research, curriculum, and most importantly, the voice of the stakeholders. So, I'm going to just go through each area. We'll start with art. Art, you see an extremely extensive makeover, and the reason for that is, the ladies and I figured it out, art has not been in formal review since 2001. A lot has changed since that time, hence the major changes in the program. And as Stacy so kindly reminded me, and we're receiving a beautiful new facility that allowed us to bring in courses we might have not brought before. So, we were excited that this review aligned with that new facility. So, based on that, Linda kindly sent some questions beforehand, and we'll go through and answer those, and then you can ask any other questions about art before you approve it. The first question was, how are the lab fees determined? Normally in Franklin, we don't assess students a fee, but we, what we discovered in art was, we were using average to below-average materials to create product. And what was happening for students when they were competing, and art portfolios are now valuable in all areas when you're designing a portfolio to get into college, not art itself, but products from there. And our students were dealing with not as high-level quality of product as the other districts we were looking at. And when we found out why, it's because all other districts that we looked at, with the exception of Franklin, were charging fees. So, Dr. Patz and Mr. Millsner charged me with working with the ladies to put together exactly what these materials were, what the costs are, can we incur them within our budget, and if we can't, could we assess the students a fee for exactly what is needed to do do the work? So, that's still in process of being finalized. And then, could you see a list of the the standards for school? You will see that that are referred to for each course area. You will see that, but not until the formal review. We're using, obviously, the state standards, but the more progressive design standards are the new national art standards, but they're in draft format until March. So, we have the documents to use to do the work, but we can't formally design courses until we get those standards in March, so we can't share them because they're in draft. They don't anticipate a great deal of change, but you obviously have to respect that they are in draft format, so we're working there. The digital design semester only, it was listed on the front page, Jean is going to address that.
Well, good evening, and thanks for letting me have a minute to talk about this. The second semester, really what that means is taking into consideration of the high school renovations coming into play and not exactly knowing if the digital lab would be open. We wanted to offer it in the 2014, 2012 school year, because the middle school students are asking for it. And based on their requests and their interests, we still wanted to offer it that year. And then the following years, we would operate both semesters, but it was due to instruction considerations, why we had it as second semester specific.
And then Paula was going to address the 2D animation questions.
All right, well, 2D animation has been a very hotly requested course for years, even before the digital lab at the middle school. Kids want it, they see it every day. One of the questions was, why isn't, why aren't there any pre-grads? One of the questions was, why aren't there any pre-grads? The reason why is that because of the digital lab at the middle school, the students already have some experience with it. We want to take that experience at the middle school and run with it. Now that we're going to have a digital lab, we'll be able to take the programs that we currently use now, see how far we can push it, and see what the next step will be. Okay. One question was, what is the difference, what is a traditional animation? We see Pixar, that is computer animation, it's still flat and two-dimensional. Traditional is hand-worn, cell-by-cell, 24 cells per second. So you see the hand of the artist in this piece. We move from the pencil to the computer. Each one is a tool they use to create. It's, the computer's not the end-all, be-all. But it is a tool that we want to focus on. We know that is where the careers lie, such as media, such as marketing, such as the arts in general. So there's always that underlying current of where is this going to take us? And the beauty with animations is that it also links with our literacy. We're talking storyboarding, how do we make a story? How do we put the story into words? How do we put it into an image? And be able to share our ideas and our images with the mass media.
And no new software will be required, we're using what we currently have in the district, Photoshop and Jean, what are you using?
At the middle school, I'm focusing everything in iPhoto, Photoshop, and then we enter it into iMovie.
And then as far as the career pathways, they were inadvertently missed, so I'm glad you caught that. And Stacy has a list of the pathways that we'll add there for that area. So we'll get, we will get those pathways in there. And then the Adobe certification, I'm going to refer back to Stacy to share her responses. Paul, I'm sorry. Stacy came at five o'clock and they were chatting for a long time, so Paula, you can do that.
So for the certification, one of our visits to different schools, photography's teacher was very excited because he had spoke to another colleague of his. And they're talking, they had just found out about this possible certification for Adobe. We latched on to that with our hands. The beauty with this idea of certifications and these students would go through a certain curriculum that Adobe has created that we would mesh together with our curriculum. And at the end, they could be tested, similar to the AP idea, and be certified as an Adobe Photoshop person. We, as teachers, would have to train on this. But the beauty of this idea is that students would have this experience. It would look great to an employer because they can walk in and start doing the job immediately without training. We are looking at how to expand this. So we started out with Photoshop because students already have some knowledge from the middle school and from what we do in our courses. If this continues and there's more, we want this illustrator as well. That moves into that whole idea of graphics again linking to our literacy. How do we create that story? How do we make it visual?
If I could add that, I'd like to mention that with the Adobe certification, although we would house it in the art department, it is a great resource for any kid and any curriculum path or career pathway. And it would really open up a door for students that would want to go into marketing, business. And it's something that a lot of local businesses are looking at. When I went into and started getting training in Photoshop, I was sitting next to people that were hired by the local forums. And I was sitting next to people that were in the garden shop and the garden mart. And they wanted their members or their, basically their employees, to know how to take pictures, alter pictures, and put their pictures on the internet. But really, they weren't considered artists. And so I thought I'd mention that too and how open, how much, how many doors this will open for so many of our students.
How many of these classes will cover some of the youth option requests that we have?
We feel the, what we were missing and Paul and Stacy had good vision around this. We had no AP offerings or advanced offerings, so we feel they will accommodate the advanced students because they were tending to move on for those advanced level courses. So we will be offering two of those courses. A student that chooses to be an art major will probably, not probably, will often max out our course offerings because they, these courses, they're not prerequisiteed, most of them. So they can move through them at a rapid pace. But that, that's more for an art major versus a student who's adding art to assist them with their other career or college choices.
We were able to give a survey to the now-current ninth graders. Fifty-eight percent of them asked to be in, or said that they would like to be in a photography class or a digital art class. So there's some statistics for you.
Any other art questions? And these are all planned for next year? No, you see, they're a three-year roll-in or phase-in. If you look carefully in the, this document, Linda, it lists by year when we're bringing them in. Because of the extensive shift from a fine arts focus to an integrated arts program that allows all students and all career choices, we had to roll it in over time because it will take a great deal of design work on the part of the teachers.
So the only one for next year would be renaming some and...
Right, there's renaming and we're bringing in digital design semester two, that's the only... Yes, that's it. Because each of these courses will be aligned with the new standards and standards-based graded. So the assessment packages will look fairly different too. So that work in and of itself on the existing courses, each course still has to be reviewed and adapted. It won't be exactly as it is, but not different enough that we would reevaluate the course.
So with that, that this is probably being done within the same FTE or you see it additions to staff as years roll up?
When we start any review, the staff are told, we do not add FTE. And what we usually discover is students tend to do the voting with their feet, feet. And people tend to, more art might be offered unless it's, I don't know, FIDE. So you might see a decrease in FIDE FTE, but an increase in art. So the goal is for Mike to work with Judy, the overall FTE the same, but it could look different in the different content areas.
So we really only have to approve the one course tonight, correct?
Well, we would prefer you approve all of them so we could design over the next three years. That's why we're bringing all of them forward. We wanted you to see the phase-in approach.
Wouldn't it be better to have the context of the overall curriculum review? Close to out of context and without...
Well, it's the purview of the board, but we can assure you it will reflect the work and why we did it. It assists us with design and planning and also students so they... If you approve these, Mike has the luxury of having his guidance counselor show these to students. So if there aren't, have any art considerations, they know they're coming even though they're not in the course handbook. But if you don't, we obviously wouldn't share them with students because they might not become a possibility. So it just allows for more opportunity to have students plan for the future around these areas.
Why would you be bringing the art curriculum?
Our goal is, ninety-eight percent of it's done, but we need that final curriculum. So we would bring it forward till the end of March or April, depending on when we can get on the board's schedule. But that would be when it would move forward.
I guess first I'd like to just see, I'd like to approve it within the context of the full review and understand the need to look at the digital designs. I mean, that's my, that's me talking, so I don't know whether to convey those things. It just seems from a good policy process that we would look at the approval of these courses in the context of the review. And I'd like to honor that process by not doing that until I see the March, April, beginning of the year.
I think it's important to note that we've followed this process for a number of years because it allows us for planning purposes to do a great deal more work and just being able to plan in terms of course offerings and scheduling and so on. It really is a benefit to us to have the board authorize us to move forward because most of the work is done. And as I said, we've utilized this practice.
And while you, it may be just a formal step for you, it causes anxiety for the staff I work with because they are now beginning to work on all of these areas and planning out their work and signing up for trainings, visiting districts accordingly. And they only have so much free time to do that. And they wouldn't move forward knowing they weren't approved. So I would appreciate it just so that they can move forward in their planning and design because it is a major shift. I would appreciate on their behalf to have all of them approve this evening.
I'd like to add that in January, the students, high school students have their annual one-on-one meetings with their guidance counselors to plan their courses, not just for next year, but the guidance counselors at high school encourage the students to make a four-year plan so that they can kind of see what path they might take in various areas. So I see real value in approving this tonight for our students who are interested in these courses, particularly the younger students.
I would agree with you, Mrs. Klein. I would hate to limit our students' prospective chances of doing all of these things by not putting our trust and value into the work that you've already done. So I would absolutely be willing to approve these tonight.
I guess I want to state this, it's not that I don't value your work and recognize all the work is put into this, but, you know, process-wise, it just seems to me we would be making a better decision if we had the whole package.
I'm requesting you trust in the process. It's the same process we used for five years in all eleven areas. And you're seeing the final areas, courses come before you tonight, and it hasn't let us down. So I guess, I know that's a leap, but that's what my request is.
I think you need to make a motion, Mrs. Witkowski, and look for a second if you have to proceed with where you're going.
Is there a motion to approve these?
Not yet.
Okay, I would move to approve digital design semester two for the 2014-15 school year. Is that the next one?
We have a motion by Mrs. Witkowski. Is there a second?
I would approve the, because we're going to have the full review in March, you're saying? So I mean, if anything were to come up in March, then I can't even anticipate what that may be. We can have a discussion at that point, but I think there is value in giving them the comfort in knowing that they can move forward with their planning and the students with the guidance counselors. And I think, I wouldn't see a reason why we shouldn't move forward in that regard.
I'd make that motion to approve the art courses that are presented to us this evening.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Larson and a second by Mr. Nielsen to approve the 2014-15 art courses as presented. Is there any further discussion?
Does that include the approval of the fees as presented?
No, because we haven't determined that yet.
And your, the motions for the 2014-15 school year, is that what the motion was?
No, my motion is to approve all of the art courses as proposed. And it looks like they go through 2017, so I would, that's how I would have it.
I added the 14-15 only because it says up at the top, is that, how should the motion be, Mrs. Deser?
I would say approval of all courses presented this evening.
Okay, without the 14-15, okay.
That was my original motion.
Yes, it was.
And the motion's just for the art area we're talking about?
Only art.
Any further discussion?
Does the motion specify then the year as indicated on this chart or?
Yes.
As presented, yeah.
And how are you indicating the future courses in the book?
They won't be in the book, but the guidance counselors will have access to them. So the students that need to be counseled to consider our courses or who request interest will be shared, the pending courses for the upcoming two school years.
But they won't be in the course selection book?
No, we don't fork, we don't put courses beyond the one year in the course book.
Thank you. Can I have a roll call, please, Mrs. Slater?
Sure.
Mrs. Evans?
Aye.
Mrs. Larson?
Aye.
I say yes. Mrs. Witkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Nielsen?
Aye.
Mrs. Klein?
Aye.
Mr. Alexanderovich?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. The next item would be the physical education health course.
As, I don't have physical education health teachers with me here this evening only because they will come to join us when we bring the full review to you. The review is just about complete. And as you will note, the only change, with the exception of a title change, is senior health will now be offered junior or senior year. It will be the same course. And the reason for that is flexibility for the students in their schedule. You have to offer health between eighth grade and your senior year. Based on our students and what we offer at middle school, we know that it's important for students to get another dose of healthy habits and choices prior to leaving high school. For some kids, that's better to happen junior year. For some kids, it's better senior year. So administration would like the opportunity to advise students to take it either year. And students would also have the opportunity to select. So that's the, there's really no change other than we wanted you to be aware of. We were opening up to two grade levels rather than one. And then Louis kindly shared that he wanted to advance weightlifting to be changed to one and two because when he was trying to encourage students to consider that course, they thought Arnold Schwarzenegger is a good advice. And it's just been extended skill, so he wanted to reflect that in the course description. So that's why that change was there.
And part of the reason that, I just want to add that there are not very many changes because this was recently under review.
Five years ago? When I came here my first year, it was, they were working on implementing their decision. So this is, they went through five years, starting the sixth year, and we were reviewing it. And it, the program was developed with much foresight and progressive decision-making. So it withstood the new review, with the exception of a few areas.
Right. Is this the first one that went through the five-year cycle?
It was before my time.
Before then? Yeah, I didn't, I thought it was more recent than that.
So if there's no further questions, that one's very simple.
Yes, we're looking for a motion to approve the physical education health course as presented. Motion by Mrs. Slater, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Larson. Any discussion? Here and now, can we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mrs. Witkowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Larson?
Aye.
Mrs. Evans?
Aye.
I say yes. Mr. Nielsen?
Aye.
Mr. Alexanderovich?
Aye.
And Mrs. Klein?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. The next item would be the social studies courses.
The social studies is in review K-12. And it, it has been in review for almost three years. And the reason for that is, we were getting, we were told national standards were, how the core standards were coming from the national level. common core standards were coming from the national level around social studies. So we patiently waited. We worked with a regional group, 11 other districts of the area, doing the best practice and research as a collective group, and then we patiently waited to receive standards, and we never did. And I've been in contact with the representative from DPI, and what she shared is there is no plan for any change in the standards. So the only standards we have are standards from the 90s, from the state, from Wisconsin. So what we decided to do as a district was the area needed to be reviewed because the delivery of it needed to be reconsidered and the offerings based on a 21st century learner. So we, we used the state curriculum document, we used the national curriculum document, and then the advice we were giving both from state and national level was to strongly consider the disciplinary literacy standards within the common core state standards of literacy because it's not as much about content, but it's more about skill and application of the skill. So when a student learns a skill in social studies, it shouldn't be a memorized fact that they could Google. They need to understand what's out there, and they need to understand the content, but they have to be able to reapply that. Grade points were taken with the economics area because students have to use what they learn, not memorize it and forget it. So we redesigned our curriculum using the documents we were able to use, and then we assessed the stakeholders and made some decisions to determine what courses should be offered. And I'm not going to steal Susan's thunder, but she will explain why we made the decisions that we made around social studies.
Please excuse me for standing, but I can't sit in that chair if you're welcome. If you're wondering why I started doing that, that's why my back started hurting. I'd like to change up the questions that I was sent, the order of the questions. I'd like to get rid of the ones that I think are probably, you know, less controversial or have a lot more explanation to them. The first one was, what does student-written synthesis of document-based questions mean? It's on page 16 of your document. It's the very end of the AP US description, course description. All of the AP histories, whether it's U.S., U.R., or world, all depend on what's called the document-based question. Students are given anywhere from six to 14 documents, and then they're given 15 minutes to address a prompt or a question. They, 15 minutes to read those documents, and then look at the prompt of the question, and then write a written response. And that written response is really just a fancy word for essay. So they're doing that, and to be honest, it is a phenomenal thing to see what these kids can write in an hour. It is, it is absolutely amazing. I'm an AP reader myself, and just, you just can't imagine what beautiful essays children can put together in an hour with 14 documents, and not 14 short documents, 14 documents, some of them dating back to the 14th century. So, so that's what it means. If you'd like the verbiage change on that, it's a little awkward. I kind of looked at it myself later on, and I kind of, I can see where there'd be some problem there. So that's the first question that I was asked. The second question was, how do we know how many semester electives we need? It's pretty traditional. We've always had eight semester electives. It seems to be a good number for us. It seems to meet the needs of our students and what they require of us. And what we've always traditionally done in social studies, if we come up with a new class, then we look at one maybe that's a little dated, all right? And in this case, what we did is we took two courses. We took world affairs, and we took geography, and we morphed them into the new cultural diversity class, all right? I think that's, not the cultural diversity class, sorry. The.
History.
Nope.
That was controversial.
No, contemporary issues around the world. So then we took world affairs and geography, and so those together. We took a class that was called Native American Question. We thought it was too narrow, and we decided that we needed to really open that up for more student choice, let them look into some cultures that they would like to investigate, and so we named that Cultural Diversity in America. So the question is, how do we know? Well, we don't really know, but we've done pretty good with the eight that we've had. And what we also talked about this year is putting them all out there this year in the course registration book, see how it goes. And if some of them don't get a lot of interest, there's always a possibility of running them every other year so that you don't have, you know, one section of one class going every year. I think that could help with the FTE. So that's a possibility as well in the future. So that's the reasoning on the eighth, it's no specific number, there's nothing hidden in that number.
And not all eight run every year, it's based on student choice, and if the class has enough student enrollment to run.
Actually, I'm going to tell you that all eight have gone every year at Franklin. Yeah, they've always been, we've never had a class that didn't run. We do only have one set of geography this year, which was part of the reason why we thought maybe we should morph that into the world affairs and really do something with that.
I guess I didn't understand that we actually were dropping some. It wasn't real clear. Because I didn't pull the existing books, so which ones are being drafted?
Native American Question, World Affairs, and Geography. I think that's it. And so we added the new ones. So we added one entirely new course, which is the History of Popular Culture in America, and then Cultural Diversity in America replaces the Native American Question, and then the Contemporary Issues is really the old world affairs, so to speak. We found, by the way.
Breaking the Rules is something else, sir.
What?
Breaking the Rules, how, a bit of.
That, I can explain that one in a second.
Okay, all right.
I'll explain that as we kind of move around. The Contemporary Issues, by the way, the title for that course came from looking at some of the other school districts in our areas, and most of them had a Contemporary Issues class, and we thought that was a really modern route to kind of use in place of world affairs. The next question that I was asked was, was the specifically created inroads class, which is called Breaking the Rules, intended to meet a social studies requirement? And the answer is yes. Terry Testman and I sat down and did a nice little brainstorming session one day and said, how can we help these kids, if inroads happens, how can we help these kids really get into their career as fast as possible and into this, into the classes that really interest them? We're not changing the amount of credits that a student needs in social studies. They still need three credits. But what can we do to kind of, because right now, currently, they have to take world history, they have to take U.S. history, and they have to take econ. So what we thought is, we could morph the world history and the American history together into one class and get those two out of the way, the American and the world, and then let them have two electives to play around with so that perhaps they could take an AP psych. We're thinking about putting AP econ in as inroads goes further down the road, and really letting the kids take classes that are more interesting to them. I think that you are probably aware that they're, you know, they're looking at three inroads areas for the next year, but they're adding more in the future, and one of them might be in the arts, and so that was one of the reasons why we did the History of Popular Culture in America, because we thought that might really help those kids who are interested in arts as a career as well. But Terry and I came up with that, and then I came up with the title, and I've been thinking about it nonstop for months now, how, I mean, there's a lot of freedom in knowing that you can really look at things that are super interesting, like biomedical, and you can look at global business, and you can look at manufacturing and engineering, and you can look at things like, you know, like how they built the Eiffel Tower, I mean, and the history around why that is in the world fair of, sorry, it is 1889. So that's why that course came up. Now, once I told that to Linda Latour, she was on that in a heartbeat, and she's like, we need an English one that's going to go with that, that's going to be a nice sort of cross-curricular maybe attached. And so that's where the English title came from, which you'll be learning about from Terry, I think, in a minute. So I'm not stealing any more of Terry's thunder, she can.
I think just in general, the quick way to sum that up is, when a student chooses a pathway, they still are required by statute to take certain amount of credits. The idea is the credits should be married to the pathway they're interested in versus random credits from the high school. So you're seeing the first design to try to honor students' interest in a pathway.
I think it's important to note that they will meet all the standards. I mean, they're not just being written arbitrarily. Susan has phenomenal experience, and she's on the college boards. They will meet the standards, and they will meet the requirements. All the kids in inroads will meet the requirements of a Franklin High School graduate as far as the core classes. And these core classes will address them in the manner that Wendy and Susan was.
Yeah, absolutely. Linda Latour is well aware of the common core standards, and I am well aware of the standards that we're, you know, we've adopted to use in social studies going forward. Should I move on to the last question, which is the comparative government and the econ? What happened was, and I think that Wendy summed it up pretty nicely when she said this has been a very interesting road for us. When we finally dug in and we started to do the work and we had the standards written that we liked, we brought our team in, and Rick Enya is here tonight, he's part of that team too, he's here to do the Jifan trip, but he was part of that team, Brian Carey, which was kind of part of that team, Jim Bucet was part of that team, Nick was part of that team, and I'm sure Jeff Aviash was part of that team as well. And we sat around, and we started to look at courses, and we started looking at standards, and the one question, the one concern that kept coming back again and again and again as we were going through these standards was that we were not teaching citizenship and government at all. There is, it's very difficult to fit it into U.S. history because we actually teach U.S. history pre-revolution to current U.S. history in a year, which is an awfully huge chunk to teach, and then we really weren't hitting any of the standards that we were being, that we've now agreed to. So we started to kind of look back, and we looked at the econ standards, and we really felt that economics can be taught in so many classes at the high school. I teach economics and world history. You can teach economics and AP American Government, you can take the time to teach that. But, you know, teaching citizenship, which many of us feel is a very important job, in fact, you guys put it as part of your philosophical statement tonight, that making, you know, creating citizens is very important. I'm not saying that not teaching them economics is not important. We certainly have it as an elective. You can take economics as an elective. We are certainly looking into putting AP economics in in the future as a possibility, not only just for the inroads program, but then also for any other student at Franklin High that would take it. And I also believe the business department does a lot of personal finance, they have personal finance classes as well. So we really felt that while we were, we felt it would be easier to integrate the teaching of economics into our current classes than trying to fit, say, you know, American Government into world history and trying to get it in there. So that was the reasoning behind why we do what we did, and it really came down to reading the standards and looking at the standards and best practices.
And, and the trend is integrating subjects whenever possible because students tend to learn them better when they're integrated in something they might find of interest. So by no means will economics be ignored. There are standards, there are implications around them. It will be integrated into areas. And, and again, it's not gone, it's just not required.
Also, if the inroads is approved tonight, one of the inroads is global finance. I believe it's a so-called global finance and international business. So I mean, there's an opportunity for kids who are really of interest, if this is approved, for that to go forward.
You said you're morphing American history, American history.
And world.
World history in one class.
It's not really about the content, Mrs. Evans, it's about the skills. And I can hit those skills, teaching both, and give these kids an opportunity to have those two extra credits to really look into areas that are of interest to them.
I understand that, but it's also a time issue. I mean, that's a lot of history.
But you're not teaching the facts.
Yeah.
You're teaching them that the facts are out there, and here's how you can access them, and you make sure they understand what, how the facts impacted who we are and where we stood. But it's not the old notion where you memorize facts so you can move more quickly because students have many ways to access them, once they know there's facts to access.
And that's the common core way?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, it's skill-based and not content-based. You're doing that.
And I understand that for those of us, you know, sitting here, this is a complete reversal of how we learned our history and how we learned our social studies classes. I really do understand that, but this is a different generation, and they're always going to be able to look up random facts, but you have to teach them how to do that. You have to teach them to find a website that's valuable. You have to teach them to be able to read a journal article, cite evidence appropriately, and be able to use that. And so those are the skills. The other thing is, our middle school, for instance, if you're concerned about U.S. history, our seventh grade middle school teachers are phenomenal. Those kids, they still know their stuff when they get to freshman and sophomore years, so they have a really good base to work from, and then I think we'll be able to fly from there and do a really good job with that.
I'm concerned with you putting American history and world history together and using the common core way, and then you're saying you're fitting in economics also into this. So many adults can't even understand economics, and then you're saying they're supposed to kind of figure it out on their own.
No.
Well, if you're, if you're trying to fit economics into these classes.
And I do not, can I just correct? It's not the common core way. The only common core standards in the social studies curriculum are literacy-based standards.
Right, because I didn't, because I don't know where there's any social studies in the common core.
Right. The social studies is the Wisconsin curriculum and then the national curriculum, and the emphasis is a skill-based curriculum, not a fact-based memorization curriculum. So the common core only comes in because everybody needs to understand how to speak, write, listen, represent, and, the last one's escaping me right now, but read. So that has to be embedded in all areas because if students can't do that well, they can't learn the knowledge and do exactly what you're saying, they won't be able to understand it. So those standards are coming in all content areas.
I just want to say, my daughter in fifth grade is, they do social studies, they don't even call it social studies, it's literacy, and it's about social studies. They use the literacy aspect to learn social studies.
You know, a good example, example of what you could really do is, you know, I teach mercantilism, I've been teaching mercantilism the last couple of weeks to my world history classes, and mercantilism is a very, it's an early, you know, economic system, and then we start to talk about capitalism. With, with groups like the inroads kids, you could actually then go all the way kind of through and say, okay, let's look at how this kind of transcends, you know, transcends the time period and what to what we have today, and do some current readings on what's going on right now with the economy. I mean, that's the, the nice thing about inroads is that it's going to give you the liberty to kind of do that. So the content of our history is never going to get smaller, so we need to be more judicial about what we choose to incorporate into the classroom and what's really going to, you know, give them the most experience in doing the skills. There's no way I can teach every bit of world history now, so I understand your concern that now you're saying you're going to be wrestling with it, but I think you need to kind of let go of the idea that I'm going to be teaching every fact about American history and every fact about world history, because you're right, that won't happen. But the idea is to kind of work with themes and to use those skills and to move those kids through these big picture ideas. And then if they have an interest, they can go back, and we can do projects where they can pick and choose things that are of interest to them to really delve into.
But we still have world history and U.S. history.
We do.
So some kids will pick those.
Correct.
And they'll spend a year with world history and a year with U.S. history. This other class will be one year of blended. There's still this, how many credits was up to?
There's two more.
Is it three?
If you're total, two more after your, your first year of world history, you would have two more. Or they would, I'm sorry. After they have their blended class, they would have two more to take.
And this, swapping the economics was required, is a semester class.
Is a semester class.
So of the three credits that they need, 2.5 are prescribed.
Correct.
And you're proposing to still keep 2.5 prescribed, but?
Well, there's three, students are required to take three credits in social studies. We require, we give them choice around 0.5.
But if you're offering this blended one, that's, so the requirements would be different for different students then, wouldn't it? You either take world history required, U.S. history required, whatever the other half is going to be in one elective, or you take Breaking the Rules or whatever.
Right, right. For pathways, students, you're right, they would have.
Different requirements.
Right. Based on their interest.
But they'd still have three overall.
Yes.
They still would have three years before.
And when you enter as a freshman, you already are picking then what your requirements will be? I mean, what if I'm a sophomore, I decide why I go into inroads?
We're not off, we're, we're starting it with freshmen and moving it forward, so the existing high school students, if I'm not mistaken, aren't going to be coming backwards for lack of. backwards, for lack of a better way to put it, into Inroads. So this is for freshmen moving, next year's freshmen moving forward.
I'd like to clarify one point on that. Wendy is correct, for the core classes, they are going to be moving forward. If we have a lot of students and we are anticipating that, just from the kids coming up and speaking about it, that want to take the Principles of Biomedical Sciences, that course will be offered to everybody, though the Inroads kids coming into the biomedical science pathway will be taking that. But if we get enough interest, we're not going to penalize the kids for being older for a course that has so much value and robustness to it and gives them such a great career experience. But for the core classes, absolutely it's only the kids.
But it would be a choice, not that they're in the path like.
That's correct. Yes, they wouldn't be in the path, thank you.
Is the comparative government a semester class as well, like the econ was?
It is a semester class, yes.
Because I don't, I'm still trying to get my thoughts put together, how to articulate this, but there's just something that kind of makes me feel like, the description of the comparative government class is something that would be more of an elective class. And I understand your argument for getting, covering econ in so many different areas, but there's just something about having an economics class as a class that's all of the students go through, to me, to my core, it just seems like that's important. And maybe just a philosophical difference, I don't know, but that's just.
And respectfully, I, you know, obviously we've had it for a number of years, so we felt the same way. And what made us make this switch was looking at the standards. You know, ultimately, we are held accountable to the standards, and there were so many political science standards, governance standards, citizenship standards that we were not addressing at all. And we really felt that we could leave the needs of the kids in terms of economics throughout our other courses. Yeah. And that really was the decision.
And that's the tricky part in why you see so much requirement in those three credits. Normally, we try to allow students more options, but it's similar to a math or an English language arts. We require them to take certain courses and don't allow them to elect until later because we have to legally, by statute, cover standards. So we can't hope a student designs a pathway that allows them to cover the standards. They have to be required to take certain courses so that we're assured they cover required standards. And then beyond that, they can have reoccurring opportunities around those standards that are used to design the elective courses. So that's, that's what Susan's explaining, is we were missing required standards that they weren't getting anywhere else because we couldn't integrate. And when we looked at it, we couldn't integrate them in, but we felt economics could be integrated in, so students will still see those economics in the other area, still have the opportunity if they should be advised to be there or they should choose to be there. We are eliminating economics, but we are trying to honor the required standards that the statutes expect us to deliver. So that was the shift.
And also, I would like to reiterate again that some of my colleagues, you teach personal finance and the basics of some of those types of fanatics. I know it's not exactly, it's not a history of economics in any way, shape, or form, but they do hit upon many of the fundamentals in those classes.
I'd just like to say, you can't underestimate, our social studies department has been so strong relative to EP participation. We're talking tonight about EP economics, but I don't think you can underestimate the value that a course could play relative to this discussion. It could be extremely popular, or it will be.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the social studies courses as recommended, with the exception that we return the economics class to the required course and make the comparative government class an elective.
I guess I need to ask why you would make that as, what basis would you want to do that?
I'll second that because you should have a conversation until the second.
Okay, fine. Second, and I'll ask the question, on what basis would you do that when we have so many staff members evaluate this and work through it and have people that do this on a daily basis for teaching instruction? I guess we need some clarification as to why you'd want to do that.
I am uncomfortable and I, and I just think it's a responsibility to the students and the community that we have economics class. I don't, I don't find a comparative government class, which to me should come after an economics class, is a substitute for an economics class. And that's my opinion, I think we could find, I'm not sure which stakeholders you had in your group that helped decide this about the economics class, being an elective now, but I'm sure you can find a large majority of our citizens that would agree that we should have an economics class as a required course. And I believe that, so that's why I made the call.
I know that there was a lot of work that went into this discussion and review, and in the years that I've been sitting here and listening to the curriculum that's come before us, I've never had a reaction of, yeah, I don't think we're going in the right direction. And so again, it's kind of hard for me to articulate, but it's just more something where I'm just, it just, it felt like if we could not completely upset the apple cart and put that as, as the requirement and this comparative government as the elective, I guess that's just, it's hard for me to articulate, but that's just how I feel.
I think we have to remember that we're doing these for students, not for adults.
Right.
And the fact that we integrate and it's really the best way for instruction to take place in modern instruction and education, is to integrate practices throughout several areas, which we're doing with this. And then those students still have that option of taking the course. I think we meet those demands and...
But the students might not do that, though. And the students are going to become adults and they need to have an economics course.
Based on the standards, the expectation was to bring in, based on our review of the standards, we were missing a complete area and it was difficult to integrate the work in. So we weren't, no disrespect to economics, that's why we left it on, that's why you don't see it tonight, but we're looking at that AP Economics course. And economics can be integrated, the other areas are missing and we're struggling to figure out a natural integration of that area. So I completely honor what you're saying. And the reason you see no work from social studies nationally is because it's such a political area that when I talk to some of the state national people, these very arguments are happening in government at all levels and they can't make decisions around them. So what you're doing is very natural and it's what everybody does around social studies because they have a firm belief, if we don't know about a war or we don't cover something specifically, our students won't be successful. We're trying to design it in a way where we can integrate an area and honor another area that we were lacking, so that was our decision. And we certainly did want to take all choice out of social studies. We could have required economics and required comparative government, but then the students would have no choice. And if they opted not to take any social studies their senior year, it would have been all forced choice. So that's our recommendation. We believe it, but it's, this is political work and, like I said, that's why you're not seeing a national curriculum come forward. And we had to move, working on a 1990s curriculum and integrate the required Common Core literacy work into it. So, Mr. Kania?
I just wanted to say that, you know, as sitting in that review and also being a poly-sci major in college, the, what we saw were students that we were graduating who, obviously, they're going to be in the economic system, they're going to have to know economics also, but there are also one thing that we can guarantee, going to be citizens of this country. And they did not know how laws were crafted, they did not know who enforced laws or why, and that's government. And we, the one thing that our citizens, our students are going to be, is citizens who need to participate. Right now, within young people under the age of 25, we're lucky if we have 25 to 30% participate in government. And that's shrinking each year. They don't understand what we do. They don't understand government's function. And that's really kind of what led to this, and the fact that, you know, when you look at the curriculum document, the course standards, you know, there were four or five things that we...
We didn't set out to change it. We certainly didn't.
Yeah. That we do not touch at all, that we're required to teach them about how laws are crafted, who crafts laws. You know, it's sad if we're sending people who are going to vote who don't know what the people who they're electing do. That's, that's not serving them well as citizens.
Well, I understand that, but the class is also comparative government, and you're talking about governments throughout the world. I mean, if you're going to teach government, why aren't you teaching about our government first?
I can answer that. You can also take AP Government in lieu of taking the comparative government, if that's of interest to the kids. The other reason is because we're living in a global society, a global world, and we're talking about putting in classes that have to deal with international business, so we thought that they should have a good bearing. I would assure you that that class will be taken from the American perspective first and then compared to others. It will not be, let's compare foreign governments and then, oh, let's throw US in at the end. That is not the case. That is not.
So we don't have any government classes at high school level?
We have AP Gov.
AP Gov.
AP Gov, which is an American, American Government class.
So they get the introduction to how building a law, if you will, at...
If they take that.
Currently, we have three sections.
Like at the middle school or something, there's no, actually, you're in the grade school, but I mean, you don't get into those kind of details in the high school level, those probably have the US Government class.
And currently, we have about 70 students enrolled in AP Gov, approximately 70.
And maybe that was just a part, Dr. Rook, when you're talking about the political hot button, when I was just reading it about the, well, phrase, the various types of government and draw conclusions, that they're effective, there's talks about the students will discuss what politics is and assess the role in governing. Those seemed more like elective-type topics. And I think that's kind of where I came to my conclusion, well, this seems more like an elective-type class instead of a core class.
Right, you don't see the exact standards.
So, I mean, but I do, there is some value, not some value, there's tremendous value in having people know how our government operates and how things are done and what happens and, you know, who enforces the laws and all that stuff, but...
Why isn't that incorporated, integrated then into US history?
I guess.
Why wouldn't it be more appropriate?
Because we cover from pre-revolutionary, pre-colonial America, sorry, all the way into 2013. We, would you try to do that? Now, I'll be real frank with you, there are other school districts that pull that apart and they do US history in two years, but this district, when I first came, we did it in a year and a half, and then through the process of one of the reviews, we changed that down to a year, and that is a big chunk of history. So that is why, there's simply just not enough time.
There's a million ways to design, and you're hearing that. It's just we were trying to bring forward a set of required courses that met the standards we're expected to deliver in a way that made sense to the educators that are delivering them. And like I said, economics was never disregarded, it remained there, and it was, it definitely would be integrated into the area because there are standards around those areas too. We just tried to find natural fits for those areas. So that, that's the tricky part of all of the work. Because it's, it's an art to design what happens after you see this. And so when they sit down and struggle, they try to ensure they prevent, put the best course before the students. And so in their mind, this work to allow them to create courses that would be palatable, allow for the skills to be appropriate. And so they consider all of that when they're making the decisions because it's not, it's not about a college course where you read a bunch of facts and regurgitate them. We have to appeal to the learner so they're willing to accept the learning. And I guess what we could offer is, once they're designed, we can show you where the economic standards are in the other courses and what we're doing with them, and look at it from that aspect to see that they're there.
One of the things that we have, we're at liberty to do now because we've gone to a more thematic approach, is that we could make economics, you know, much, we could make it an area of focus in world history for sure and in US history probably also. So that could definitely work. But it really does come down to the standards, and as we were going through those standards as a group of six of us, we kept saying, well, where is that taught? Oh, we don't teach that. Where's that? I mean, it really was, it was an epiphany, it was like, wow, we have a problem on our hands because we have so many of these standards that we're not able to do something.
And that's why we reviewed, because your curriculum deriffs, it was never intended to design it and not cover the areas. And the one thing I think we need to remember, poor face gets a beating by many people just because they say, ah, who needs a sewing cook? Our face does, at middle school, does an extensive unit on personal finance. And so while it's not the history of economics, definitely we honor personal finance that all students are required to take at that level too. So we don't disregard or downplay the need to ensure students are literate, financially illiterate, both from the history aspect and the practical aspect. We're not downplaying that at all, just it comes in a different package in Franklin, I guess.
I just have a couple of general comments about, that can help to frame this out. They're just general comments about curriculum development. And one of them is what Wendy was referring to, that all curriculum work is political, just like we're talking about here. It depends who's in the room on making these decisions. And the second thing that causes us to have a struggle is the time boundedness of the day. Yes, we like to have everything, all stuff is good, let's get it all in, but there's only so much time. I think Susan, you know, was alluding to that. And the third thing is that we tend to get in a box of thinking that something can't be done unless it's a separate course. And what we're hearing our experts say is that it can be done even if it is in a separate course. And my favorite example of this was that I met somebody one time, spent like a half a day with them and found out what I did, and, he was an Italian guy, and he said, well, what would be the chances of us just requiring that we have the Italian language taught and required in all of our schools? And I said, I know all curriculum work is political, and I know that, you know, there might be some interest in that, but I can tell you that won't ever happen. And so there's, there's this perception that unless it's a separate course, it can't happen, and we're hearing our experts say that the standards are telling us that it can. So it's something to think about.
You asked a great question earlier, which was the six people who were in the room making, you know, making the decisions. And we all have a personal stake, we all teach certain classes, we're all certified in certain things. Absolutely, I 100% agree with you. But when it's in the standards and it's black and white and it's not being taught, that's a problem. And if we're going to be expected to teach that, then we have to do something, and this was our solution.
And we do have standards? I thought there's...
The state, the state expects us to use the 1998 or 6 standards, so we use those standards. The National Social Studies Council redesigned all the standards two years ago, but for political reasons, they didn't get traction. But we did look at what was in there because that's a forecast for the future. And then we had to honor the disciplinary literacy standards, which are the literacy standards. So it has, our curriculum has the requirements in there, and then the additional standards that we feel are important because they're the skill-based standards that we're moving towards.
So why don't we just have government and economics as a class and just...
Well, we can do 100 different things, so we can do all of that. We're just explaining to you our rationale and the thought that went into the courses we're offering this evening, but we can do many, many things. But this was the way our instructors chose to design it, based best practice research, looking at other districts, analyzing the standards, and working through it. So we can do many things. This is what we're requesting for approval, and we'll wait for the motion and move forward, hear that vote and move forward.
Wendy, you say that the standards that were required to follow by the state were from the 1990?
Right.
What are those specific standards?
There's hundreds of them.
Hundreds of them.
No, well, in this area, I mean...
I don't have to elaborate on this area.
Do they say you have to have world history and US history? Is that a standard?
No, standards are, you have to teach certain content, certain skills so they can apply the content. So they're, they're not about courses, they don't tell you courses, they tell you information, and then you have to design how to cover them. And what we're trying to weigh, and we also look at trend, what's trending and trending a... and trending appropriately, and what's trending is integrated work is what's expected. Students should not be learning in silos. They should be applying, because we don't work in silos. So students should be applying curriculum in a, in an integrated fashion that makes sense and is more real-world-like. So when we talk about economics and we looked at the standards, one is more easily integrated than the other, and so that's why we, we made the decision.
I can see where, in your discussions, how you were finding these voids, and oh, that's not here, and that's not here, and as I got to thinking about this, maybe it's, maybe it's more on the comparative part of it rather than the US part of it, because I'm, I'm right there for having everybody learn how things happen in this country, but when the first sentence of the course is knowledge of how government and politics affects the lives of all people throughout the world, I get the global citizen part of it, but maybe what gave me the visceral, visceral reaction that I had was that it's not more US-based, it's more world-based.
And respectfully, when we write these descriptions for new courses, we do the best we can in trying to get the, you know what I mean? Like, we, we're not a hundred percent sure, but I mean, that's certainly a description that we could tweak if you wanted us to say in comparison to the United States or in some, in nature like that, just have a greater emphasis on American politics or American government. That would, that is, that would be acceptable to me.
Well, that would be a way for you to fill the void that you're talking about that's there. I know we have the global citizenship and that whole bit. And certainly bring in the econ in through these other areas, but also could even be part of something like that.
It could be, absolutely.
And again, I really, I really sit up here and second guessing. I'm not trying to do that because of all the time you guys put into it, but I'm trying to articulate how I just think that as it was written, it seemed more of an elective than a core, but
And we appreciate the feedback.
I don't need to fill a lot of the US part, but tie more of the US government into that, but I have.
And we appreciate the feedback because we assume what we know and often don't put it in writing unintentionally. We try to be clear, but, you know, Susan instantly said, no, this is the focus, and just, it wasn't there. So it helps us to redesign. Melissa did some of that when she met with us. In some of Linda's questions, she, you know, you, we, we try to be perfect and we like to think we are, but it's good for other eyes to see it. That's why you bring it forward.
And I'll admit, I wrote, I wrote the description.
There it is.
And, yeah, and, and with, with, with the suggestion that we, we consider this while in the end, it was going to be an American government focus because that is the best system in the end, that we, we honor the global citizenship, so that's why it's written the way it is, but it certainly could be rewritten because.
I mean, I would, I would, I would think even if you were to be called the US, US government or something, you're still going to have your comparisons in there.
Yeah.
But at least the, the title might be not so reactionary. Am I just focusing too much on this point, or is, are you guys thinking about this?
We really have the motion, actually.
I'm off the floor.
I think we should take care of the legislation amendments. I mean, what makes it unique is it's required. Now, it's required. It's not, we're picking this over this. So it's gotta be one or the other. And we, you seem to say that you were, we created this because of standards, right? Standards you're trying to, that were missing, but the standards you're referring to are really old standards, nineteen ninety-six, you said. So there seems to be a lot of.
So those are the only standards that are there.
Right, and, and we did use the national standards. We, we can, we can add to the required standards. We can't subtract from them. So we can add what we think is a more contemporary addition of standards, but we cannot subtract. So we could say, Wisconsin, we didn't like that, even though they know it's an outdated document and tried several times to move it forward. They haven't had the opportunity to do so for many reasons. So we enhanced the document with the national social studies standards, disciplinary literacy standards, and honored the required standards by statute.
I think what, in summary, what, what we're trying to say is that they're both critical topics for students to learn, but that the economics fits better into other courses than the government does. So it's not a choice that we're taking one away and adding one. It's that we're going to be teaching both, just in different ways.
We're going to integrate.
And we can bring back that integrated information so you can see it, and certainly the comparative government does have an elective flair to it. We can look at a more traditional title and change the wording, and that might make, make more sense.
And also econ, economics will be offered as an elective, and we do hope to bring AP Economics online for anyone who has an interest outside of what they've learned in the classes that we offer.
What would be your suggestion for an alternate title?
I'll let this, Mr. Polly side over there.
Well, US Government jumps out right away, but it, you know, it depends if you still want a global flair, then we'd have to think and tweak a little bit. I'm, I'm here for Japanese, remember?
Should we just call it the best government? Because then you're just going to like the best government.
Well, to bring it back to your motion then, your, your motion is to switch comparative government and econ. And I guess throughout the discussion, I don't know that I'm necessarily there. I understand the importance of having the government class. I just don't think this portrays it out to the public that that's what we're doing. With the way it's worded, I guess. I just don't think that's what you were trying to get across, or if that was what you were trying to get across, it didn't come across so well.
Is there any reason to not call it US Government and put the global flair and the comparative in the title, in the description? That would be my recommendation. That's obvious, and we're, we're not trying to be tricky. We want to be transparent, so I think that would work.
Yeah, we were not trying to be dismissive. We were really thinking that they were really comparing us to the American government.
There's a motion on the floor to approve the courses, the social studies courses as presented, with the exception of returning economics to a required course and moving comparative government to an elective. Motion by Mrs. Evans, second by Mr. Alexandrovich. Without further discussion, can we have roll call, please?
Sure.
Mrs. Larson?
No.
Mr. Nielsen?
No.
Mrs. Wackowski?
Yes.
I say no. Mr. Alexandrovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Evans?
Aye.
And Mrs. Klein?
No.
Motion fails four to three, so we're looking for a new motion.
I would make a motion to approve the social studies courses as presented, with the caveat that the comparative government course will be renamed.
US History.
US History.
Government.
Government.
Motion by Mrs. Larson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nielsen, any discussion? Comparative Government, I think it's more than just the title. I think maybe the description can, can also, could it be changed to put more emphasis on the US?
Absolutely.
I mean, yes, yes.
Easily.
Easily.
And, and I think maybe the community might, I, I don't know how you could do it, but the community might like to know that you are teaching economics throughout the coursework. I don't know.
I, I think that would be a definite point of emphasis, because I mean, that's something, when I first saw that, that's why I had the reaction I did. Because I'm like, wait, I'm not teaching economics, but, and I know I'm not going to be the only one that's going to think that, so I think as you let people know how it's woven into all these different areas and keeps it to be important, because it is an important topic. I agree with that. Maybe more on being redundant, so.
Any other discussion?
And we'll see these revised when you bring the full review back.
Right, we, I mean, we can bring this back to you next time so you can see the official, we'll just send you an email with the official description change.
And I guess when we approve these new ones, should we also be discontinuing the old ones in, in the motion, or do they just rub off?
Well, I think if you're approving the course descriptions, that goes without saying that there's missing ones that aren't, I mean, you could formally do both, but we are asking you to approve what's here, meaning what was there is gone, unless it's sitting in the document. We've never done that in the past. We've never approved discontinued courses. We just approved the recommendations as they stand moving forward, which goes without saying that the discontinued courses are there. We can do that, but I'd have, I need to go get a book and give you the exact titles and add that in.
Maybe going forward, it'll be useful to know where. Not just adding, dropping.
We can list them, I guess.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Sure.
Mrs. Wackowski?
Aye.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Aye.
Mrs. Evans?
Aye.
Mrs. Klein?
Aye.
I say yes. Mr. Nielsen?
Aye.
And Mrs. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. And finally, we're on to inroads pathways.
Inroads, just a few words. The majority of the inroads pathways, and we have three of them starting next year, will use existing high school courses, but we did need to add additional courses that were specific to the pathway. And then we also needed to make the pathway an experience for the students that wasn't what students currently do, and that is select courses out of a handbook and design your own pathway. This was a specific pathway around a concentrated area, and to do that, we needed the required courses so they understood what it meant to be in a pathway, so they truly could explore and experience the pathway. So we had to offer some courses specific to this new program we're offering to make it a true experience and a program. So that is why we made the choice. So I guess, just looking at my notes, because this is so new, all the details in the pro, in programming are in process and being designed. So we brought the courses forward tonight because we had to, but as far, Linda had some very detailed, important questions. But we have to involve staff, students, and community stakeholders, business people in the process. So we can't sit down in a room and quickly make decisions. We have to do it appropriately to ensure the design of inroads is what we expect it to be for students. So the courses are thoughtful. They're thought out. They need to be added to ensure a student experiences a pathway versus random courses that they choose to take. But every little detail is unfortunately not worked out because of the extensive process. It's a, it is a completely brand, brand-new program that we're bringing forward to our students, so Terry said I can tell them the timelines to make sure everything's in place. That's all worked out. Nick oversees that with Mike's support, so very much work in process. We just don't have a lot of exact details. I think to the required courses, I can have Terry speak to why those three requirements came in.
As far as the coursework that is being offered in the biomedical science pathway and the engineering pathway, one of whom we are currently offering, and that doesn't show up, so the first course that the kids are going to take if they choose the engineering pathway is actually Introduction to Engineering Design, which has been offered at the school for many years. The kids, it is a national program. It is, the curriculum is written by a huge amount of people with, with engineering, educational and various backgrounds. It is embraced by major universities such as Northwestern, Duke, Wisconsin, MSOE, RIT, and to the point where they're giving the kids college credit. It is not something that we're throwing together, even though we do have a lot of professional people there that are capable of it. It is a nationally-designed curriculum that's been in place, and as I say, it's embraced in the college, by the college people, and from the president down to a lot of other people, it's actually been embraced as one of the leaders down programs in the country. The biomedical program is also put on by Project Lead the way that curriculum is, is written. It has been in place for six years. Kids could also get college credit for that. The nice thing about that curriculum is they explore thirty-three different careers within the context of the curriculum. I can get into a lot of specifics, but I won't because for, that, today is not the time and place to do that. They are very, very solid programs. Again, they are designed on a national level by a huge amount of input and groups of professionals, and they have very much stood the test of time. The marketing one and the global business one, that is the one that's in development, and it will not be done in a vacuum. We are bringing in professional people from throughout the community, which is going, which are the major stakeholders in this area as well as on a national level. And we are getting input from the DPI and from the technical and four-year colleges to do that. So again, it's being done in a wide, wide, with, with a lot of experience. The English class is being taught that is also going to meet the standards and, and meet the core requirements. But what it is, is doing is that it's going to be adapted to the text that the kids are reading from a literacy standpoint are also addressing what they're getting in the curriculum. For the global business, you know, one of the court, one of the books that will be written, would be read will be To Kill a Mockingbird. And that is something that gets into the politics, it gets into the government, it gets into the various areas. For the biomedical pathways, and all the kids in that class will be doing it, there's a nonfiction book called The Mortal Life of Henrietta Locke. The kids in PBS and the Principles of Biomedical Science actually take HeLa cells, which are Henrietta Locke cells, which were discovered in the, in the nineteen forties, and they're the only cell that does not mutate. And they, they were received from this lady, and they drop them on slides and they visualize chromosomes. So now that's going to be tied into the English literacy. And so they're learning how to read fact, scientific literature. They're learning how to analyze. There's a huge discussion around it because there's a huge ethical issue. What, the, that family was never compensated for, you know, it had to do with, with, what was felt was racial discrimination. It was done by John Hopkins, a leading university. So the kids are not only analyzing it from a course that they're taking in the, in the inroads, it is also being analyzed from a standpoint from how do you read technical, or how do you read a factual literature? How do you look at the scientific aspects behind that? How do you look at the ethical issues for that? And how do you look at might be, because Henrietta Locke was an African-American woman, whose husband couldn't even go into John Hopkins to be with her when she died. And they were never compensated for. And then how did that get the FDA involved into the fact that with clinical studies? So the idea that course is not teaching what the kids are learning from the core standards, it's just to use a different vehicle that ties them in and opens up a lot more synthesis, which is higher on the Bloom's taxonomy. They're not memorizing. They're actually taking all this information from all over and having thoughtful discussion, and they're synthesizing it. So those courses were, they are, the, the details and the nitty-gritty details of them, as Wendy said, are being, being worked out. You know, exactly how it's going to be incorporated. It's going to take a lot of heads getting together over time, and again, we need to have that time to do that. But the course description is corporate around the project lead, the way curriculum, which is in place in a very solid curriculum, as well as the, the, the inroads.
And I think if you turn to page nineteen, you'll see regardless of the pathway a student chooses, there are three required courses they will all take, and so I don't know if you have any questions around that, but I just wanted to point those out. Those are not specific to a pathway. They're specific to the experience of being in the inroads program. And Nick and Mike will happily answer any questions if you have. Do you want to hear from someone other than me?
What is collaboration, innovation, and community? It's a seminar mentor experience in nine, ten, eleven, anyone's available. Anyone can take that course, but what, I guess I'm not sure what.
Yeah, there was a need to, as we talked about, this being a shared experience for students that are in road, in the inroads program, regardless of, of path they were taking, if they were biomedical students or if they were engineering students. There was a need for them to have, to, to share in a common experience, and, you know, around that common experience, they needed an opportunity to work with members of the community, to, to share in presentations as a large group, to work with career counselors and work in small groups around some of these career pathways. and work in small groups around some of these career pathways. There was a need for them to apply some of the career exploration elements that they're getting in these courses in a common way and synthesize all of it in one place under the direction of some instructors. And so we saw this seminar experience as a way for them to come together, synthesize their learning around all of these courses that they're taking, work with community members, work with career counselors and mentors, and be able to really apply it. And the vision for that course is that as they're applying it, they'll be doing it to community-based projects, they'll be doing it to school-based projects, and things that really bring all of those components and elements together into one place and allow them to really get deep with their learning in that individual pathway with the support of their peers that are in that program as well as the teachers that are supporting them through that. So, you know, we see that really as a kind of a culminating experience for kids, a regular experience for them, where they're communicating frequently. We see some ability in that course to bring them together as 120 students, a new auditorium, and do some engagement with the community, or opportunities to break them into smaller groups and do some other things around that. So, you know, again, it's that opportunity to connect all of the dots from the biomedical course to the engineering course to the global marketing course to what they're doing in the community and to kind of tie it all together and really make that experience meaningful for them.
And I would just add, to bring this full circle, you know, the backdrop to a lot of the inroads discussion and pathways, as we've heard it called, is really kind of an entrepreneurial perspective. So seminar, and to kind of link it back to economics, you have that kind of entrepreneurial backdrop and emphasis. A place like seminar is a great place to kind of expose that and bring that to life and talk about all the networks of professionals in the area that we're hoping to tap into that we're pretty confident we will. It's a great place to, I don't know, bring those things into play.
It's a very student-driven experience, you know, it's where students are bringing ideas to the table around how they can connect their learning and, you know, under some leadership and some guidance, kind of realize the value of that and see those projects through.
It's a great example of it. The other day, we had Pat turn in with a computer course, Project Lead the Way computer course. So to kind of take that a step forward, you know, two, three years, you'd be looking at groups of kids who may be through a seminar experience, you know, maybe working collaboratively on projects that they're going to develop.
But it's a one-year course, you take it once, or?
Yeah, I think our thought process is that that, there are levels of that course that can take, because, you know, as we talked about where a ninth-grade student is relative to that process and where a 12th-grade student is going to be are different, right, in terms of that evolution. And so the idea that, you know, at the ninth and 10th grade level, there might be a shared seminar experience, and then at the 11th and 12th grade level, there would be a shared seminar experience, so that, you know, you would essentially take that course twice. So you would take it ninth, 10th grade, you would take it 11th and 12th grade, and that's how that experience would shape.
If you think of the full design, if you don't have an opportunity for it to come together in an integrated approach, they may as well just choose courses out of the handbook and call it a pathway. We're trying to truly make that pathway come alive so they can explore and experience it in an entrepreneurial way, in a way that makes a real-life learning for them versus classes. So you have to have some way to pull all of it together somewhere.
The notion of a pathway, we live with pathways now, it's just that our students don't always see them. They can just have a conversation around, it's almost like they're starting to see strands. I can remember one of our first conversations, it kind of came up, it was something about taking a drink from a fire hole was, I mean, that's how serious we are about, you know, bringing that pathway to life. It's putting it front and center for kids in a way that they maybe haven't experienced in a current system.
But this is a class they sign up for, it's required. It's required every year? It's required once, or you're still working on that?
Well, as far as our planning, yeah, I was going to say it's required for next year.
For next year?
With these freshmen.
And it's not standards-based like the other courses that we heard about?
Well, everything's, they're all, yeah, I was going to say they're all around standards.
This one?
Yes. It's integrating the standards, so all the things are learned in isolation, it's taking the standards and bringing them into an integrated experience, like a service learning experience, a work-to-school-to-work experience. So we never design anything that's not directly standard, it's just integrating all the pathways, courses into that one course.
It's research, it's literacy, it's critiquing, it's all of these things.
A definite application at play.
Project-based would be another way to mention it.
Doing our motion to approve the inroads pathways courses.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Larson, second by Mrs. Klein.
I just have one other question. I know you mentioned that some, the courses are already, the curriculum's already established, natural curriculum.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a cost to that?
Is there a cost to the curriculum?
Right.
There's a cost to the program that, yes, because there's supplies and that would have to be obtained.
There's no specific cost, other than if you're using a Project Lead the Way course, you have to pay to send a teacher to be trained. It's no different than any other course here as far as cost, nothing unique?
Buying a book or you provide curriculum?
Right, well, we will use any materials, and there is a cost to that, but.
All of that material will be shared, so it's, you know, if it's a science course we need or on my flask, that stuff is already here. That equipment and supplies are already at the risk.
The cost is within the budget.
Right. What was the AS slash TC stand?
That's advanced.
Advanced standing and transcripted credit.
Could talk about that. TC is transcripted credit, and AS is advanced standing, and they both are under the umbrella of what we call dual credit, where the student has one course experience but earns credit for it at high school and in some higher-ed institution. The difference between the two of them is that the transcripted credit is actually like better and more valuable because it shows up on the student's transcript, just like an AP course does. It shows up on a high school transcript as a college course or a technical school course. Other courses that fall into this category in addition to AP as our Project Lead the Way courses, because they are, of course, students have to meet the criteria, you know, you get such a degree in the course, you pass a test, and they earn college credit from NSOE. And then another type of transcripted credit at a technical school is on transcripted credits with MATC. We have several courses like that, and it shows up on the student's transcript, it can count for any college that you take it to or any technical school in Wisconsin that you take it to, it's a tech school credit. Advanced standing is much more vague, and it refers to technical schools only, you wouldn't see advanced standing necessarily, you might, but it's mostly with MATC. And they may count in a student's favor depending on what program they go to. It doesn't show up on the transcript, but if the student didn't apply, get into the school, they get into a certain program, and it's, in some cases, it can count as an elective credit in their program. So it's more vague and a little less valuable when you have it right there on your transcript when you go to high school.
One of the, when I was here earlier, that's one of the comments I made about that the kids can come out, I had a student come out with 24 college credits, they are actually getting a college transcript from the school that they applied to for that. So if it's MSOE, that was the example I used, where it's $65 for three college credits. I had a student come out with 24 college credits, and he already started, you know, as a second semester freshman just from his Project Lead the Way courses. It's got that much rigor built into the system that these colleges, they analyze the curriculum, look at it, and say, we will give you credit for that. And the same thing, those courses, those kids that will go away to two-year technical school, they don't have to repeat those courses. Our kids will take those courses to Flatville, and they won't have to take those classes over again. Those are college credits, they're not just on their high school transcript, they get college transcripted credit as well.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Larson, second by Mrs. Klein. All those in favor of approving the inroads pathways courses, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Extension? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you all for your work and input, we appreciate it. Next item is the youth options request. We have Mr. Doak. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bring before you a request for approval of six youth options courses, courses being requested by five of our students. These students have exhausted the curriculum and the related programs of study. The requests that you see before you are the following areas. First off, molecular pathology course from Marquette, a human microbiology course from Marquette, advanced Spanish composition and conversation from Marquette, a course called Music 127, Materials Theory at UW Milwaukee, a course Death and Dying from Marquette, and an advanced interpretation, which is a sign language course from MATC.
Do I hear a motion to approve the youth options request as presented by Mr. Doak?
No, I don't have a motion.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen?
Second.
Second. By Mr. Schleter. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of approving the youth options request, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Extension?
High abstain.
Oh, I'm sorry. One extension. Okay, so motion carried. Six ayes, one abstention. Thank you.
You said aye.
Oh, I meant, no, you said, what was your call? I meant to say no. I'm sorry. Okay. Five ayes, one no, one abstention. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nielsen. All right, we have Mr. Kane for the NICE Japan trip approval.
Okay, I guess what I'd like to mention is just basically the cost of the trip, and that would be $3,000 would be the maximum cost. I broke down from the last trip what the costs were. I'm expecting that the airline tickets are going to be at least $200 more. I'm hoping that we can save a little bit on some of the other costs because the yen to dollar exchange rate's gone up quite a bit in our favor in the last two years since the last trip. At that point, it was about 80 yen to the dollar, now it's near 95 yen to the dollar, so we're a little bit better in that. So that'll bring down JR radio passes. The other thing that I'm going to do is probably have a stay in the youth hostel instead of some of the hotels in Kyoto and Hiroshima. That should bring down the cost about $20 a night for those options. The other thing that's always been a concern is chaperones, and so this next trip, we'll have two other chaperones on the trip. Mrs. Berry?
And my husband.
It'll be so much fun.
But you should also know that we are paying our own way. I'm not taking anything from the children.
Right. And at the moment, you know, it's all tentative yet, but I believe we'll have 10 students who are going to go. To be honest with you, there's a lot of students who just feel that the cost is a little too high, which makes me sad that I can't get it lower. I will say that when I looked at companies that provide the trip, the lowest that I found for a similar trip is $4,000.
So you were trying for 25 students in order to lower the cost?
Well, I was trying for 25 because the more students I take, the happier I am about it. I mean, it's about, you know, having the students in the program and getting to experience going to Japan. I think that helps encourage their studies, so the more students, the better.
Doesn't help to go fewer days, or you can't really justify the airline time?
Well.
Affordability seems to be.
If we went fewer days, we'd probably just do home stay, we could probably, you know, save some cost on that, but I find it kind of, you know, to take them halfway around the world and just go to home stay and not see Kyoto, not see Tokyo, you know, and some students, they want to go for the rest of the trip, others want to go for the home stay. I guess in a perfect world, I'd be doing more than one trip, but I wouldn't be married. I'm honestly married.
And you're going to do the web thing where you can follow you?
Oh, yeah.
That was kind of fun last time.
Hopefully, maybe the technology's a little better, we can do something else, maybe, I don't know. But this is, last time was the first trip where any of the students were able to get their cell phones to work in Japan, we had one. I'm afraid to see what our bill was.
Do we hear a motion to approve the, is it the 2014?
Yes.
Japan trip?
I'll make a motion to approve the trip.
Motion by Mrs. Klein?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Larson. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Extension? Motion carries. Enjoy your trip.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is the impact fee discussion. Dr. Pats and I had invited Mr. Liberta from the city to be here for the discussion, but some things transpired so that we did not need to do that. Dr. Pats, did you want to give a brief background first before I say what happened at the meeting?
Sure. You remember, the issue of impact fees is brought to your attention actually the day after the referendum. I met with the mayor right afterwards because throughout the pre-planning for the referendum, we were aware that, you know, Franklin has a structure for charging fees and so on and so forth. And we had a discussion with the mayor regarding, quite honestly, candidly, to say that I thought we should be exempt from paying fees, both construction fees and impact fees and so on and so forth. And at that time, it was simply a discussion. It eventually evolved into the point where we had our first set of fees come forward, and there were probably three or four meetings that I, when I met with the mayor regarding the construction as far as the progress of it and so on and so forth, and in every one of those, we would have a conversation regarding fees as well as city use of our facilities after a while. When the restroom facilities and concession stand were built, the whole fee structure came to surface again. Initially, there was a very large amount of fees that were going to be charged to the school district. That was taken under consideration, and they looked at some ordinance provisions and loopholes, if you will, to bring that, initially, that monetary figure down to about $90,000. Jim and I went down, we met with Mark Liberta and the mayor regarding those impact fees and had a nice discussion, like we always have with them. And in the end, the sewer fee for the restroom facility, impact fee, was $2,040, and the water fee in terms of an impact fee was $4,956. And then the concession building, the sewer impact fee was $2,040, same as the restroom, and then the water fee for that was $1,252. At that meeting, we still expressed that we thought we should be exempt from doing this. If you go to nearly every school district in the state that I'm aware of, and certainly I'm not aware of all of them, when there's new construction, the city usually looks at the institution as a nonprofit and a real asset to the city, let alone the fact that charging those fees is really just sort of double taxation on everything we're doing. So that whole thing was resolved, and we were appreciative of the city and the work that the mayor put in and Mark Liberta to get those fees reduced down and look for ways to get those fees reduced down. That was a real gesture on their part to work with us. And then came the high school project, and we were talking about fees, they're of a much larger project, obviously, and so we had some initial meetings with Mark Liberta just to talk about the initial impact of those, and what came down to a pivotal point in this whole process was just prior to And what came down to a pivotal point in this whole process was just prior to the point where we could start putting up a wall. Now, I'm not talking about the footings, just the wall. The city would not give us a permit until we paid our impact fees. And so we were in a construction meeting and I was told at that meeting that we weren't going to begin construction because we didn't pay our fees. And I was under the impression that that was going to be taken care of in another way. It was not. And so we had to come up with a check that I called Jim right from the construction meeting and told Jim to find a check for $91,720 because we need to get this building going. And that was really about a two-week delay in that whole process. So once again, we had another, I had a meeting that day with Mark Liberta just to talk about the fact that, you know, we weren't real happy that we had to pay that kind of a fee for a building that was going up that was going to benefit the community and really had a double taxation impact. So the total for all those fees was $102,008. And as we went through this process and took a look at it, Jim and I met with the mayor again. And Jim, as you may not know, initially, when the impact fee study was done, Jim was on that original committee. And the intent was never to charge the school district impact fees. But somehow through the process, and which often happens, you know, that's charged to everybody. And so at that last meeting we had, the mayor told us that he was going to be putting forward a resolution to ask that the city council, I guess, give us our money back is one way to put it, however you want to look at it. And so that process is moving forward, which we're very grateful for. And hopefully, it goes the way it is. And if that money does come back to us, it obviously goes back into the referendum dollars because that's where it came out of to begin with. So that's a little bit of the history. There were a lot of meetings that took place regarding the discussion of that particular issue. I think Jim and you and I had three of them with the mayor and others. And it was nice to work with them and we appreciate what they've done so far.
Thank you. Yeah, I was at the common council meeting when they, when the mayor brought forth the resolution, which you have in your possession. And it was a unanimous vote, which says they will go forward and make, you know, make an ordinance. And one of the reasons they said the school was considered under the impact fees was because in the original committee that you were on, they had us listed as a institution. So I think they'll probably be changing that. So. But, and they did say the fees will be, it'll be retroactive back to January 1st that we'll get the money back. So that's a good thing. Thank you, Dr. Pats. Any questions that we probably can't answer?
Very good news.
It is good news.
Is there any way that they could share those impact fees with us as, because it does say recreational facilities and...
Well, that's another thing. Another item the mayor brought forward was when he was in support of the Sabre Stadium project, he brought that to the council. He said, would they consider sharing impact fees with the Sabre Stadium project? And he asked that that got brought forward to the Franklin Forward Committee. And from what I understand, from listening to what was going on in the room, that's not allowed. I think it's a state statute. I don't know if you're familiar with that, Randy.
Got to own the property is the biggest thing.
Well, can we just change the state statute?
Did you have a comment, Randy, on that?
I was on the city's first two impact payments. The way we did it originally, and I can't speak to what's been done since then, but the way we did it initially was essentially to quantify and a variety of different categories. The public, you know, infrastructure access, suppose you'd say, parks and, you know, various other things. And then essentially portioned that over the existing community. And you'd be familiar with the concept of an impact fee. You know why they exist, how they came about, any of that kind of stuff? Okay. So it was based on the existing community and then imposed on new development in proportion to the, you know, the value of the project, the impact, that sort of thing, in a variety of ways. So I don't, there was no impact fee for schools, never has been. It was discussed initially. There was no impact fee law in Wisconsin at the time we did it initially. Ultimately, before our suit went to court, Wisconsin adopted a law, but there still has never been a fee. So the point being, school property, school infrastructure was never included in the basis for the fees. So it would be a matter of some discussion, I think, to say, well, okay, we didn't include that in the basis. It wasn't part of the fee structure, the underlying structure for the fees. Then would it be appropriate then to be expending it on school property when it was never a part of? That was not the purpose. I mean, you'd be essentially breaking good faith thing for the people who paid the fee because it wasn't for school fees. It was for other clearly documented, established, quantified things. And their presumption on behalf of the people who paid the fee was that it would be used to fund improvements of the kinds of things on which the fee was based to begin with.
Thank you. But at any rate, it did go to the Franklin Board Committee. See what they do with it. Thank you. Item nine E is the budget review process discussion. Mrs. Witkowski, Mr. Alson Dorridge, and Dr. Pats and Mr. Wilson.
We did share with the board an document that covered a number of areas that we had recommended for some changes. One was the budget timeline. And I think there was some agreement that you might refine that to clarify which items were really internal, which were related to the board. I think we, there was some agreement on that. Then we talked about better planning for capital projects. I don't know, do you want to say something about that, Alan? There was still, I think there's still some, I know we have the listing, but there was some, our recent experience, and I'm not going to bring up the concession stand, but the pool project wasn't really at the top of the list at the time that it was part of the budget discussion. So just, I think it's move for some improvement on these maintenance plans and projects.
Right. But the last time we had a meeting and we discussed all this, we were looking for feedback from the administration as to what kind of movement there could be and what items were open, more open for discussion than other ones, or what would be some of your recommendations? And with Dr. Pats being gone, I don't know that we got anything back. I did not see anything. I know you and Jim had some conversations, but we didn't get anything back in writing as to where we might go. So I actually think the whole thing should kind of be tabled till we can get some responses and get, we'll be together on this.
I think we can give a response tonight.
Oh, okay.
Jim and I have met on this and I think the document covers a lot of areas, many areas which are really not tied to a budget document. For example, the reference on the fund balance policy, that's a policy issue. It really doesn't tie directly into the budget process. But I think what we did is we took a look at how we've been budgeting the district. And I don't think anybody can contest how well we budgeted and how in our process. I think we have an outstanding process. And I think the successful part of that is that we involved a lot of people early on and there are plenty of opportunities. I know one of the criticisms that's in your document is that, you know, the opportunity for involvement. I went back and looked at board records for the last seven years and I counted over 25 opportunities in terms of board meetings where people could have had the right to or could have come in and they knew it was a budget discussion because it was on the agenda. And we don't get people that do that. And I know one time they were talking about a budget committee. We were looking at the Greendale model and that didn't pan out the way I think anybody wanted it to. But I think our process is one that really is, is one that works very well. And I think Tim really summed it up best at the last meeting is that we look at, internally, we look at, Jim and I particularly, that, you know, our job is to formulate the budget by drawing the staff in, you know, principals when we go in, initial meetings when we start the budget going. And we get down to the nitty-gritty. That's our role or responsibility. And I think particularly Jim does that in an outstanding manner. And the boards will, obviously, that is when we bring that to you, it's the oversight, the general oversight of that 10,000-foot view, if you will. But I think there's just a lot of times when we take a look at budget documents that we've, on a number of occasions, I think, given people, the community in particular, an opportunity. And I know in my time here, I've had two people that have questioned the budget document. And I don't know how many Jim has had, maybe you have, as board members have had quite a few as well. I think there's some good points in here that in terms of the information that we provide, particularly the budget timeline, I know Jim has put that up forth every year. Last year, I think it got a little bit twisted because of the referendum and some things got off track a little bit. But before that, we've had a pretty consistent process all the way through. Granted, there have been times when it would be postponed, back a meeting and so on, so forth. And so those things I think are good to point out and things that we can remedy. The mention of the review, the budget review timeline, as I just discussed, then goes into the district goals. Those really don't apply here. And the listening sessions for the community, as I said, I think we provide the community with every opportunity that we can. And I think that, and we're not unlike any community, there are just people, if we were spending foolishly, if we were not having quality programs or quality results as a school system, then I think people would be here. But, and then the other thing, I think Linda's point about the planning for the capital projects, certainly the concession stand was one that we, the process that we did administratively, I'll take the blame solely for that, was not good. But the pool coming forward, that had been on the list for some time. And I think what the board has to understand maybe a little more clearly is that when we have lists of things, things can pop up to the top of that list in a hurry because we look at it from our position to say, you know, we didn't have it necessarily ready for this year, but because now we can, it gives us an opportunity to do that. And this other thing over here can wait a little bit. So we're going to revise our list to be able to say, here are our general categories and we'll prioritize from those categories as we move forward. Because when we moved into the pool, we met the board's expectation. We brought an idea before you for your consideration. And I think that process worked very well. In a couple of meetings, you were able to get the information you needed and so on. And of course, at that particular juncture, it coincided with the time that we were looking at adopting the budget. So there were questions, you know, does this fit and that kind of thing? So that worked out quite well. There are a number of things in here that I think are, quite honestly, unrealistic for us to do unless we hire a bunch of people to compare ourselves in terms of transportation, technology, facilities, those kinds of things with other districts. Every district is so different. We just don't have anything that we can say is similar, whether it's bus routes or the number of people or the number of kids. And just the per pupil cost is one idea. Every district is different. So we could compare ourselves to Nicolay, but then we could go back and compare ourselves to Gold Creek and there would be a dramatic difference. And what do we gain from doing that comparison other than us spending a lot of time? We don't think that's time well spent to do that in that manner. So I think as we looked at this, there are some things that we can tighten up on, particularly the timeline. But as far as the other process and the fact that we give out the reports on a monthly basis and when we do, one of the things that was mentioned here was the FTEs. Judy brings that report every year to the board. We talk about FTEs. The reason we choose not to go any further with that is because we have full-time FTEs, we have part-time FTEs, we have coaches that are part-time FTEs, we have aides, we have a litany of people. To go back and dissect those and attach them to all the particular events here, I think that gets into, quite honestly, a little bit of micromanagement of the process. And that's where I think the oversight portion helps us best. And the management portion allows us to be able to, you know, scale into the budget, if you will, and take a look at the things that we think are most important to bring forward. And as I said, the fund balance policy that was mentioned, I think it needs to be taken a look at. Jim and I talked about that today, there's no question, because we've got some pretty strong ideas on what we should do with that for the benefit of the district over a long period of time. Because I think it's, and we addressed this two years ago, I think it was, if I'm not mistaken. But things have changed since then even, so I think we need to take a look at that from now on. So that would be our response. I think, you know, as I said, we're very comfortable with our process. I don't think we look to change a whole lot other than the communication part of it. And I think when we take a look at, for example, when we talk about the more information category here in the open enrollment, I think we can best do that by bringing that as a separate report before the board to say, here's our open enrollment. For example, we had a heck of a discussion this morning, you know, when we were talking about the boundary adjustment, just about open enrollment. And I think that's going to cause us to be able to get good information, not only to the public, but it also maybe made us wake up and realize that if we bring that forward, you as a board can have that as a talking point as we go forward. Because open enrollment is critical to our district. We really can't exist without it. If we get rid of it, and a lot of people say, just get rid of them, that would be the kiss of death for our district. We would go down in a hurry. So, but I think those are the kinds of things that are probably more suited for a report type of venue. And that, you know, would be sort of our overview of it. Jim, did I miss anything? Anything to think of? No, I don't think so.
We can't get rid of open enrollment, can we?
No, but I'm saying people who say, don't take as many or that kind of thing.
Well, that's different than getting rid of them.
Yeah, well, absolutely.
You know, I mean, I think that's a valid discussion to discuss how many people we should bring in and what we're looking at for class sizes and ratios, but yeah.
And we do that every year. Judy takes some of it. And we, you know, we have a meeting to say, what areas, what buildings have room, what grade levels have room.
Right.
It's a good discussion point for sure.
If the fund balance policy is something that you said you and Jim were, had discussions about, you have some serious thoughts on it, are, we going to give a report back on how you're feeling about that?
Yeah, and I think, you know, we just had a brief conversation. But one of the things I think we need to take a look at as a district is within that fund balance policy, taking a look at creating a, I don't know how you classify it, Jim, a category, if you will, within the fund balance policy, that we put money into on an annual basis for different improvements, whatever they might be, whether it's a cafeteria or a gym or classrooms, whatever. So that we don't always have to go back to the community in any form to be able to say, whether it be a referendum, now chances are we wouldn't have that kind of money in there. But it would allow us to do some of the bigger projects that we, you know, and we have the ability to do that over time. So what we'll do is put something together, just say, here's what we think should be contained in that. And then you can direct us in terms of policy to address it.
That's what I was just going to bring up. I just saw in an article today, it says Mesquiko did that. They have a permanent fund for capital projects where they just put, they have $900,000 in it for this budget year to keep the money separate from the rest of the budget. And then they said that way they get as much state aid as possible under the state formula.
Right.
State formula, so.
Well, if you follow the news, it's athletic in nature, but nonetheless, it applies. The Superior School District, I believe it was 15 years ago, don't quote me on that, their board took and started setting money aside into the fund balance policy. And just recently, they voted to pull up the new stadium with turf, what we're trying to do, only much bigger. And they didn't have to go bottom of dying because they already had a designated fund that was within their fund balance policy. So they just were able to, there were no taxes, no increased taxation on the people in the district, and they were able to afford it, so.
Could you, oh, sorry, could you're able to put some money aside each, every year?
Yeah. We bring something forward for you and recommendation.
Any other discussion?
Alan, do you want to bring anything about monthly reports or?
I think Steve made a comment that the monthly reporting is really something separate from the budget review process that they were...
Yeah.
And although we have a comment out there and what we were putting together when we were brainstorming, that may be something that should be brought up as a separate topic.
And we'd be receptive if you wanted to, I'm trying to think of a category, a report on X, you know, whatever meeting to be, for us to be able to bring that forward in addition to any other information you already have. But I think those reports are different than what the budget process is. I think the budget process is a strong process, but I think some of the other things are peripheral, though they could be indirectly tied to it, can be done in a little bit different way.
This may be very simplistic, but I think if we're making any changes like that or requesting reports, it should be something that the full board is in favor of doing, not just one board member, two board members wanting our directors to spend time researching and developing a report just for their satisfaction. I just think it's something that we have to, as a board, agree that we are all in favor of having in our possession.
I think that's where that's... That's part of the guidelines, that the administration does not report to any one board member, they report to the board, so.
Well, no, I'm saying like if you're requesting or making a request for a change on something, I think it's something we all have to be in favor of doing.
Absolutely, yeah.
I just want to make that clear.
They were created a subcommittee to talk about...
No, I'm not, I'm not questioning the committee, I'm just making that comment.
Right, and then the committee was going to bring it to the board for discussion so we could get a consensus on it. That's all I was going to say.
Anything else?
Thank you. Item nine F, school resource officer history and update.
Just so the board's aware, I think it was in August, Chief Oliva called me and indicated that, first of all, back up one step, we reduced our budget by about $40,000 at the elimination of a police liaison officer two or three years ago. elimination of a police liaison officer two or three years ago. That's when budgets were very, very tight, and we took a look at that position, and although nobody could question that, it has some value, there were other things that had greater value, and that's why we made that decision. And then recently, like I said, August thereabouts, Chief Oliva called and said they were applying for a grant to try to be able to reinstitute that in whatever manner. If they received the grant, then we would have to sit down and say, okay, what role would the school play in terms of how much, how much time, so on, so forth. About a month ago, he informed me, he called me and told me that they didn't get the grant, but he likes to like to keep the conversation at least on the table as we go forward. I had that conversation with Nick and Mike at the high school, just in talking about how are things going, you know, what's changed, what's, you know, that kind of thing. And realistically, we've gotten pretty good support in terms of calls from the police department. We've got some processing issues that I think we have to deal with that have created sort of some friction with parents when the police are on premises and when we call them and that kind of thing. And so I think there's going to need to be a discussion between the school district, Mike and Nick and myself and so on, and Chief Oliva, whoever their representative is, to say, how, here's how we have to handle this because we're getting caught in a rock and hard place. An example would be if we called the police for our disturbing disturbance, some student that disturbed the peace, or whatever ticket they would give them, and say, you know, what role does a school have in that, and what role does law enforcement have in that? First of all, we can't issue tickets, that's not what we do. But then if we do, if a ticket is being issued, is it at the decision of the police department or is it the decision of the school district? Our opinion, that's not our decision to give a ticket. If that's the case, then I want to be able to have a decision whether I'm speeding ticket or anything else. So I think we have to clarify that because that became an issue with a parent that was in the room. And so little things like that, and we recently had another one where there was a call from a parent to the police department regarding some cyberbullying that was taking place at 10 o'clock at night. And they said, well, the school district has to deal with that. Well, that's not what the school district does. We deal with it when there's a nexus to us and so on, so forth. But we've got to have that relationship that says, you know, the police department will do X, Y, and Z, then we pick it up at the ABC point or wherever it might be, so. And maybe that's all part of the whole liaison issue. And as a point of detail, we did not have a full-time police liaison officer, Alan, just for your information. It was a part-time, there were a couple of days at the high school, they split some time at the middle school. We subsidized that position at halftime, so, and we did have an alder in the summer. So we had them for, I would say roughly 90 days, I don't have that count, but it was not the full 180 school days. And then they had the, within the contract was, it stated that if a police officer had to go on a call or do whatever it might be, that they could leave the school, then we would be without it. And so those are the kinds of things, I think, if we get back into that discussion, we have to make sure that the school district's best interests are regarded as well as the police, and I think we can do that if that time comes, and certainly it's, you know, it's worthy of that discussion, so.
No, I didn't have anything to add.
Okay.
But, so you're in favor of having?
I, the jury's still open me because I don't think we've seen a significant enough difference of not having one versus having one. But I really have to make a big qualification on that, because if you have an outstanding police liaison officer, they're like little gnats in your school. You know, they find everything out and they give us heads up, and they have heads up to what's going on in the community, and you hear things and so on, so forth, and it's nice to tap that person on the shoulder and say, hey, we heard this, and, you know, it's rumored to us, but now he's got or she's got the ability to go a little bit further than what we could have. You know, we're living in an age where parents are starting to get a little more aggressive, I guess, when they come into the buildings and say and do some things, or really make phone calls or that kind of thing. So I think there's a place for it, but I think it's really got to be a fit, and I think the biggest part of that fit is the right person. And it's got to be somebody that, you know, is the, we had an altercation in the cafeteria the other day. Well, regardless of there have been a police liaison officer in that building, that doesn't ensure that that fight would have never happened, because he could have been standing where he used, the fight could have been right here, how you ever going to stop that? Just one of those things. So I think the, in this, in the times we live in, the schools that, you know, throughout the country that have adopted that we got to have a uniformed officer, we need this and that in the schools, there's that way to look at it, and then there's the other way. Well, you know, if you're going to have him there, you need him there every day? Do you need him there part-time? You know, people are smart to know, if I'm a police officer or if I'm a criminal, and Mike's a police officer, I'm going to find out what Mike's schedule is, if I'm going to go in that building and do something, I'm going to go, and Mike's not there, because I know he's got a gun. So, you know, we have to look at the dynamics of it. I think it's got real value, the school districts I've been in have had real value if the right person is there, and if we, and I think it's got to be a person who can sort of get into the teaching mode, if you will, of not necessarily being in a classroom, but being able to have groups of kids in that he can talk to, you know, and pockets of things like that. And, you know, with drugs being what they are in the community, he's going to, you know, there's a lot of snitches out there that'll talk to a cop before they'll talk to us, you know, in terms of kids. And I think, you know, whenever you have anything that can assist in making sure the safety of your kids is better, I think it's worth looking at, but it's got to be, you know, a good fit.
I agree with that. And I actually am shocked that we don't have one, because I think we're one of the only districts in a very wide radius that doesn't have one.
Yeah, I want to gather some data on that because that's a good question, because we're not sure who has them and how long they have them and so on, so forth.
Oak Creek, Greenfield, Mesquiko, New Berlin, I mean, seriously, pretty much everybody around here has one.
Mesquiko has three.
Yeah.
Oak Creek has two.
Yep.
I don't know about any others.
I think that one of the things to investigate is how those are funded, you know, how everybody...
I agree with that, but I, I think that, I think it's an asset. I think they do, you're right, they do know stuff, and they do get information quicker and maybe they, I don't know if they feel more trusted, I don't know. But I also think, I don't know if that, we didn't have uniforms before he was playing clothes, correct? So I think, you know, and you're right about the whole schedule, I think it was Monday, Tuesday, Thursday at the high school, and Wednesday, Friday, you know, he was a set schedule.
It wasn't a lot of time, you know, it was...
It was three days a week at the high school and two days at the middle school, and I remember, but he even said too, that switching it up might be a good thing, but then it was eliminated, so.
So bottom line, we're still going to continue those discussions with Chief Oliva.
Anybody else, any comments?
Well, maybe, if we're the only ones that don't have, you know, what's the difference? Is there statistics you could look at that?
Well, that's what we want to find out, is get a little bit more of experiences from other schools, if some have two and some have three, what are the logistics of it? Are they there all day? Are they, you know, what benefit have they seen? What, you know, we know there's benefit, that's not a question, but it's, I think it's finding out, if we're going to come forward, you know, as a district and say we're going to put out X number of dollars, I think we have to justify that we're going to get a great deal of value for that. And I think you would, but I think it's, you know, how does it fit?
You can look at it being needs-based, too. I mean, how many incidents are there? Not all the incidents that occur make it to the board level, so we don't hear about all this stuff, so you would know. You'd sit back and know if there's, you definitely would know.
I know.
I think in Mike Katie's last year here, when we did not have the liaison officer, we had, no, let me back up, the year before that, when we had a liaison officer, we had more calls when he was, when he was employed by the district, we had more calls with the police department because the incidents happened when he wasn't in the building or he was at the middle school, you know, that kind of thing. And it was, that was just one isolated year, but it just, it didn't mesh, you know.
But we did check the response time that it took for him to respond to an incident versus calling the police department, and there was, I think the response time was better for the police to actually come, wasn't there? I mean, that was one of the things that we talked about.
If he was at another building, yeah. Because sometimes there would be an officer right down on Drexel, and you could get there like that, as opposed to having to drive from here all the way over, so you just thought it worked out.
Well, today, a day like today, it was not a good response time.
Today?
Nope. I can tell you that. We were, I mean, it's like the last three days, it's been a full moon. Doesn't matter where you are, the stuff was going on and it was, didn't matter. So it just matters, depends on the day. Like, you can't ever make an appointment with an officer, because they'll never be able to keep it.
Okay, thank you. And the next item is 9G treasures report, Mrs. Winkowski.
Do I, should we talk about, do I have to read that or, do we decide? Oh. Okay, as of November 7, 2013, cash balances are as follows. In the general fund, we have $10,730,002.07. Debt service fund, we have $2,578,368. Priority December 11th. Anticipate cash requirements in the amount of $3 million for the November 30th payroll and accounts payable.
Thank you, any comments?
Yeah, you see, that's $4 million. Why the difference?
Only one payroll. The meeting in December is early.
Got it.
We could spend $4 million if you want.
Item 10, board meeting debriefing, any comments?
Well, I guess I would just like to thank Wendy for recognizing the political nature of the course selections and so that we all understand that that good discussion will happen, and then we'll decide on something. Appreciate that comment.
Thank you. Item 11, future agenda items, we have the board superintendent roles and responsibilities on December 4th. Any comments about that yet? Or, are we going to, we have to do an agenda for that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Professional development report, December 11th. Superintendent self-evaluation, December 11th. And the building and grounds report, December 11th.
And we would also like to add on there the representative from the Sabre Stadium project would like to address the board.
On December 11th.
Right.
Yeah. And I just wanted to remind everyone that Dr. Patz gave us these, and we're supposed to, I think, look at these before the December 4th meeting.
Right, thank you. Yeah, look that over, and then we'll have more information, more examples on December 4th.
And just, redistricting, are there supposed to be meetings in November, or where do we?
Well, we said we were going to try to get them in by the end of November. It's, we had a meeting today, and we're scheduling another meeting for Monday at 1:00. We did, there had been a lot of work done on this whole thing, and today we had them put up all the, we had put up four different scenarios, and we took it all apart, we took a look at it, and we said, after a while, we sat back, and I guess I'll take the blame if there's blame needed. And I said, are we in a position where we really need to do this now? Or are we, are we taking a look at a bubble that exists in one of our buildings? And that's why we have to think. And what was the catalyst for that is the consultant, Ken Jaworski, has been working with the city, and they took a look at the growth, potential growth and projected growth for the city, and it sort of opened our eyes up to say that some of these areas might not develop as fast as they should or could, and that we have students that are in some of these buildings that pretty soon will be in middle school, and it's going to change the dynamics. We are still going to have the meetings, and we are going to still communicate to the community what we talked about, what we saw, but on Monday, we're going to make a decision whether we're going to go forward with any sort of adjustments or whether we should look at something internal. That's what we'll bring to the community. And I think we can do some things, because it's a hot button, and I think if we don't have to push the envelope unnecessarily, we shouldn't.[1732.23]